Thank you.
You can chill with me here.
Did we say the portals?
Yeah.
Yeah. You have something to say about your role with me?
Yeah, I guess so.
Can I go, go stop your toe?
No.
Just kidding.
Yeah, so she said, um, she reached out, they got, she got like a little bit of this. I. I think they're like, they're speaking in heaven. Is.
It's come home.
Yeah. And so then we. But then the poor man.
What? So. Oh. So.
I. Decided.
Oh.
Good. Yeah.
Will be.
Although if it's open, we say aye.
Thank.
It's the fault.
That's the way it's like.
No volume.
Well.
Good. So. And they can. The next one.
Okay.
So right now, we're just doing the order of of agenda.
Okay.
All right, you have a first and second that you leave. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Purple of consent agenda.
Ma'am Chair.
Sir.
Um, under employee status changes, item number forty-eight, I would like to have over discussion.
Aye.
Here that passed out to everybody.
Second.
Okay. Is there a spot on the agenda you'd like to talk about?
We can talk about it now, can't we?
No, my question is.
Yes. Okay.
Um.
Technically, should we vote to pull it? We only had a moment to comment that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay. Um, okay, so item number forty-eight is employee status form. For, uh. Jogi, yeah, Healby, uh. At the Correctional Center, uh. The status form, uh, was not signed by either, uh, Michelle Thiel or, uh. Roberta. In the HR office, which. Made me ask questions, so I went and talked to, uh, Michelle about it and. Um. The issue is, uh, it's a grade twenty-one, one. And it's a, uh, that is the grade for a jail administrator, which Mr. Bergold was under. And I don't believe that that's gonna happen. Uh. I think it's going to be, uh, well, maybe the rank of captain or whatever within the Correctional Center. And so, uh. Derek Schneider has been working with Michelle Thiel to come up with a job description for that position. Uh, which between the two of them, they've come up with a, uh. Job description and. Come up with a grade and, uh, that grade is an eighteen-four. Which is. I'll tell you here in a second, soon as I find it. Ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. So, uh. I, I just feel that, uh. You know. This position, um. Andy's been working very hard on this thing, trying to get this thing resolved. He's reorganizing everything at the Correctional Center. We had an hour discussion this morning about it. And I'll probably have him come up and talk a little bit about it, but, uh. He just found out now that the position that he's looking for is going to be graded at an eighteen-four from HR. And, uh. That we should, uh, make that retroactive back to when she was appointed in that position. And, uh, so I, 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 I would like to hear from other members of the commission here about it. Um, in fact, maybe Andy, you wanna come up and talk a little bit about it?
I have to pull start.
Mm-hmm.
So what we're doing here is we're just doing, we did other places, we're temporarily raising the wage. So that position is filled in a permanent like within other positions. So the question is, is, do we wanna raise it to the eighteen-four? That's the question. Okay, well, I'll move.
We want, we want.
Well, he can call you watch, but.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Ross, Chair Hagan, members of the commission. I initially, just a little bit of that backstory, initially when I was assigned to take over the jail. Uh. No raise was given. It's not an interim, it's a permanent assignment. Uh, when I assigned the interim jail administrator, that was due to restructuring and some reclassification of positions. I didn't have the official reclassification designated at that point. Uh, still work in progress. And that is why I listed it under interim administrator. Uh, because we had a existing captain and I didn't want it to be an existing captain. And, and that is what led me to establish it at that point. Uh, at this point, today, as Commissioner Ross said, we have been able to establish and reclassify. The, uh, job description of captain to where it is going to be, which will be, uh, the head of the jail. Under the new restructuring format. And that was created out by HR as a grade eighteen. Uh, as far as the steps go, there is thirteen steps in that grade, but the job duties all in line with a grade eighteen. Um, Miss Thiel worked with Commissioner Ross to determine that an eighty-three four would be appropriate. And I believe would fall in line with, uh, current interim positions that are in place in the county. Uh, such as Ms. Morrison. So if it falls in line with the county's current practices are, I have no issues with this. I had no intention of submitting this until every other interim that was being appointed was getting immediate, uh, salary bumps. Which raised, uh, some, some questions with myself and also interim administrator guilty. So, uh, if the commission chooses to make it retroactive, I have no issues with that as well. She's been doing the job since I believe April eighth was the date. But I think HR might have, uh, some comments as far as how that is established. I did, we can, we can readjust the status form. I did put on there the, uh, start date of, uh, April sixteenth with the grade and step that I established on there. Uh, if county is looking to make it a different route, or like you mentioned, is I have no issues with that. And if there's any questions, I mean, I guess some of it. Chair. Is, is part of your motion to retroactive?
Yeah.
I agree with her. I'll start with that.
Um, inside of the date. What is it?
Whatever it is.
Retroactive. Well, he said April coming, but you might be over terrified date, right? Right. So I'll just. Then you can make it. Um. Typically, when we do this, we try to do it at the beginning of a page three. That's where we came up with April sixteen. And I believe that the sheet in front of you with the twenty-one, one setting up sixteen. Yeah. So.
Okay.
Okay. You're gonna tell me good with that date, Chair? So are you gonna sell me good with that date?
It's the commission's decision.
Okay. Motion, the person who's like, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion past the end. Okay. Put us in the comments.
Uh, ma'am Chair, do we need to approve the entire consent agenda then?
I'll review it. I'll move approval. I'll second that.
You can move the idea right through here. I'm gonna look at the agenda today. I'll. The person who's like, for, for pull up the consent agenda, all of the people who say aye.
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 Motion. Now are very. City, city county cooperation.
Ma'am Chair Hagan and members of the county commission, Dr. Hagan, City Minister for. Um, I wanted, um, provide an opportunity, I had an opportunity, uh, as my, I, I assume you have my memo, I, I was gonna give you an update. I'm with Commissioner, uh, Beerkey and I, uh, met on, and I would give you some updates. There are also some city representatives that are here. Um, that we've been engaging with to support and, uh, Mr. Magnuson and others with the county. And I just wanted to come here to, uh, provide some status update. A lot of these issues, um, relate to ongoing matters and also interlinked probably with the twenty-sixteen project for both the city and Fort. And, uh, of Grand Forks. So with that, I just wanted to give you an update on, uh, number one on epitome energy. And, uh, I'll just go through my list, uh, try to go through it quickly. Um, number one, we're gonna meet on service here, um, the next item, but on epitome energy, I wanted to give you an update. This, uh, county commission and all the other tax mandates, we did approve a eighty-three percent, uh, over fifteen-year tax incentive on this particular project. I have been in contact with Mr. Egan, who's the, he's the developer for epitome energy. He's, um, this is more of a startup project, and so he's, uh, out trying to get equity and investment and also debt investment on this particular, particular project. He is still positive about the project moving forward. Um, he's got, he's working on various update agreements. Um, he's working with, uh, bank financing, he's working with the city of Grand Forks and the state of North Dakota on a hundred and seventy million dollars of taxes and bonding at part of the project. So, um, he would want you to know that, that he's working hard on moving this project forward. And, uh, it's, um, relatively optimistic that it will be forward. And I just wanna remind you, there are two swerving crushing facilities like this, one in that Spiritwood, that's up and running. And there's one in Capital Pen, that's up and running also. So this would be the third of three, um, in this region. And so he just, I wanted to let you know that he remains optimistic. One thing we've worked on as part of this project. And remember, this project is northwest of Grand Forks, just north of the city's solid waste landfill. And so it's off of Highway eighty-one and, and seventy, seventy thousand north. Uh, the city, uh, and you helped partner with us, uh, because this seventy thousand north still is in the county. Um, we did, uh, apply for a United States Economic Development Administration grant. We fortunately got it, so it's like a four million dollar grant. So it is, um, provides us an opportunity to, um, pave in concrete the road from Highway eighty-one. Um, to where epitome energy would be on seventy thousand. So, um, we have accepted the grant, we are planning to move forward with the grant. And our, our thought is that, um, regardless if epitome energy, uh, does or does not come through, that this is a primary for, uh, industrial growth and expansion. So we are intending to move forward with the grant, there is a cost share of twenty percent of the city. Um, as you probably suspected, one. Uh, sure on that. So I wanted to let you know that we are moving forward that project. Thanks for the help. Uh, you have the help support there because it, it's set clean in the county. Uh, when we do take, um, start moving forward with the project, uh, we are going to annex that land or that road similarly. On, Mr. Egan, it has, providing the project has been up when I was here, it was like a four and twenty-five million dollar project. It's likely more like a five hundred and twenty-five million dollar project. So costs have gone up and that's one of the challenges. Costs go up, you got three, four equity, better in form, yeah, so that, that's one of the challenges. Um, they had, um, it is. But it doesn't afford, it's about forty million dollars off. Water, sewer, storm, roads, build that. Um, we would plan to annex the site, we would plan to, uh, invest in all that infrastructure and work for the state of North Dakota. So there's a lot of work to go on that particular project, um, as you can, uh, automate. Um. That's kind of an update on that, and, and again, we're thankful, so I just wanna highlight that, remember that eighty-three percent fifteen years. Um, year one, we would, and with tax incentives and we'll go over this, but, um, you'll hear this again with the Greystoke. Is that the land is always taxable, so this land is hardly taxed at all. And so that land, once it comes in, will be highly valued, it's industrial land. And so year one with that eighty-three percent tax incentive, um, will provide five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's the asset. Um. Um. And additional profit tax that we don't have today. So it's substantial. Year sixteen, uh, we estimate that to be three point two million. So, um, we'll end up with five, over five hundred thousand dollars more than we already have if that project can move forward. So it's a big deal on the, with the project forward. I think we estimated of that five hundred and twenty million, probably about a hundred million of that is real estate. The other, um, project I wanted to update you on is Greystoke. And, um, I suspect, um. Greystoke is, it's all points forward, which is pretty incredible. And so I've been had my career adopt to me working on a lot of projects. And most of the projects are, uh, more like epitome energy where they tend to raise, uh, funds. Um. Greystoke has the money. They're in the industry, they wanna locate North America. And somehow, some way, we've been able to attract, um, um, them to, uh, Grand Forks, North Dakota for their North American operation. And we were able to beat out a site in this, so it's a pretty incredible thing that we have in front of us. Um, they are, they are working, um, uh, locating, they're gonna be locating folks here in Grand Forks, they'll build this. They're working through, um, trying to procure construction managers at this point. Um, they are looking at, um, a purchase, um, which we hope will occur with, of a Fubon site. And so everything is leading to, uh, June or July, then we would come back here, um, with a further update and further signal that this project's a-going. And likely that would, um, also, um, mean that we would be moving forward and asking you to be participants in the taxes on that too. So right now, they're estimating the project itself, the facility itself is a four hundred and fifty to five hundred million dollar project, um, on that site. They're also, um, estimating probably about a hundred and fifty to twelve hundred and fifty million dollars in, in potato storage, new potato storage. So all told, you know, this is likely, um, six hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollar project. Uh, not only the Grand Forks, but for the entire region. So I'll, I'll. So it's a pretty incredible return. Uh, it's gonna be fifty percent, uh, irrigated potatoes, fifty percent dried potatoes. So all those acres that we lost, the dry land side are gonna come back, um, with this European variety of potatoes. So it's, it's a big deal, we should be very thankful for our Northland potato growers. Um, in our entire region because they're the reason why this project's coming in. And what we're trying to do on the infrastructure side, on the incentive side and working with the state of North Dakota, we're trying to close a gap. Our potatoes are much better here than Wisconsin, however, uh, they're closer to the market. And the market for them is, is Walmart and even market, um, direction is south, the southwest of United States is south, or that's just moving southeast. So when you're in Wisconsin, you're much closer to the market. And so a lot of things we propose is to try to close that logistics gap that we have, um, as part of this project. So you should know that, uh, they're working hard, um, when they're developing, they have a, like, division that's really focused on this investment. And this is their next best investment, they're finishing up in France on a facility, they're finishing up a facility in India. And they're coming to Grand Forks next, so I think it's a pretty incredible opportunity for the entire. Similar to what I just said about, even at that ten percent, I just wanted to highlight some things. Because, uh, uh, I know people get concerned about incentives, you know, we're not giving them a grant. Again, we're just accepting less than what we could get. And in this case, we had to be somewhat aggressive on incentives so that we could incentivize this project to come here versus Wisconsin. But even at that ten percent. Um, you know, we assumed, I, I think, again, we assumed, I, I don't have exact, probably about a hundred and eighty million of that facility is real estate. But even that, that year one would, and again, the land is taxable, so right now the land, uh, Fubon is, it's getting developed, it's about a, and I think we have it valued at about eleven million dollars. Right? It's, it's real in that all pack form, and it's, that is not exempted at all in the incentive. So with year one, we would, we're estimating we receive an additional four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in property tax. In year twenty-one, whomever's here can thank us, but we're estimating that you want three point seven million dollars. So you can see we're both epitome energy and, and Greystoke, um, we're setting ourselves up to create two new industries. Add more further value to our overall for region and to add substantial value. And we've had lots of flat value growth, and these two are, uh, two projects that are real game change for us, um, that are really in positive, but. Um, the other thing, if I can just give you some comparisons, um, regarding just that ten percent and that seventeen percent. Right now, I'm, I'm looking at industries that are, are in a community like JR Simpli, which, you know, we're just proud to have, that's really gonna be complementary to Greystoke. Right now, we value their property at twenty-four million dollars. So you can see, um, with a new greenfield development, how much more value that we're going to bring. So right now, Simpli's paying about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in taxes. Um, on their site. Um, Cirrus Aircraft that, that we're gonna talk about now, they're paying twelve point nine nine dollars in certain taxes. And GE or the, the former Ellen Windpower, they're, they're paying eleven point three million dollars in taxes. And so, um, you can see with these new greenfield developments, they're gonna bring a lot of, not, not only jobs but investing, but, um, significant property value decreases in our. Um, to the public safety, I have, uh, Gary Lorenz, um, is here on behalf of the, um, the fire department, also Chuck Marka. We made a change, uh, on, with P S A, and so we're thankful that the fire department, we were able to integrate and, and Gary and Chuck have stepped up. Um, and really have, um, put them, um, P S A under their wing as part now part of the fire department. And so it's just another, it's another division of the fire department. So that's what we intend to do, they're here, um, so they've been really engaged in, in trying to work through all the things with P S A. Uh, one of the state law changes that I think is positive is that now P S A operators can be a part of the public safety, um, first plan. We always, you know, the story would go that, you know, um, P S A operators are just as important as, as fire. And I think this is further proof that we actually mean that by allowing them into the first class. So we are planning to integrate that in the twenty-six budget. There are two major projects, and Mr. Beerkey and I talked about, they're, they're at a large cash balance right now in P S A. Um, but we are, we are implementing a new, um, dispatch, um. Um, system, and we also are a new phone system. And so we probably have between a million and a half, two million dollars in funds. But we're going to be spending down those funds over the next few years as we implement that new dispatch system and new phone system. So I just wanna let you know that. I, um, with your fees, I think there's gonna be incremental increases, but there won't be a substantial increase. We're trying to fund those project group fees and not through the various tax pieces in that. So wanted to give you a heads up on that. We are gonna, um, Mr. Gossett's gonna work on a, uh, and work with Miss Bumscott on a new agreement. It'll be more of a user agreement, uh, versus what the authority board that we have now. So you'll end up with the server and adversary, um, being part of the authority board. Um, Mr. One was able to, um, regarding, uh, Ellen Windpower or G U, G, uh, we were able, and I know there's concerns about that gravel road and moving, um, wind blades, uh, out to their rail sites. So we did have a good meeting, had lots of positive representation from, from GE, uh, from not only Grand Forks, but throughout their, their company. And they, they take, um, being in a good neighbor seriously, you should know that, we had a really productive meeting. Free some of the concerns about dust and, and gravel, we'll make sure they meet, and so we had a productive meeting and, and reminded everybody to be good neighbors. And they were full frontal, they wanna make sure everything, but that was a couple of positive and productive meetings. The other thing we talked about, um, Mr. Beerkey and I, and I know this is, um, something that we've worked hard on, is, I'm gonna call it the social detox, uh, center. That, um, over the last year, we turned that over to the housing authorities, they graciously taken that over. And now they call it, uh, the Nest on Ford. And so, um. We, they have taken over the management of that, um, and Ms. Wallace here, all, also like, as well as the housing authority. So right now, in our budget on this is, you have to remember the Nest, if I'm gonna understand, and I verified this with Ms. Wallace. You know, we have, we have other entities that help people that are, don't have a home, um, for whatever reason, right? We have, but the Nest is of that last resort place, um, that people that have substance abuse issue, um, that won't be accepted in other, um, housing where the Nest is taking them. So the Nest is taking the toughest of the tough. And the people that are, have a tougher situation. And so they've really picked up the, the ball on that, they're looking for alternative France to help offset what we've been funding, um, as part of the city in the county. And so, um, I think you'll see that in your budget. So right now, in the mayor's budget, we have a hundred and thirty thousand in our, for our cost share. Um, I, I think Tess has in your budget, you get another, um, request for a hundred and thirty thousand. The state of North Dakota, thankfully, they, they set aside on two hundred and sixty thousand over the next five years, so a hundred and thirty thousand per year as their funding strategy. Um, and really, when we started this, I don't know, it must be about maybe eight years ago, on the state, the leadership role on it, we worked with, um, public health. It was, um, really to help offset, we had concerns that alter the emergency room and, um, people were getting stuck there or they were getting struck, uh, stuck in squad cars and whatever else. And this, this facility was set up to help eliminate that. And I think it has a lot of concern that alter, I mean, a lot of concerns of law enforcement, what do we. And I think it has a lonely lot of concerns that alter, I mean, a lot of concerns of law enforcement, what do we do with these people when. Uh, they won't be accepted at North. So that's going to be the request in front of you at that point in time. The other big one is, uh, we're really appreciative of the fact of, that the sheriff's office is kind of finding a home. So we're thankful for that. And because of that, you know, Mr. Gossett is going to work with Ms. Bombscott on a, um, this summer on a new agreement or reciprocal agreement that kind of, um. After the flood where the public health came over this building and the police or the sheriff's office moved the second floor of the police department. That's going to go away. And we'll, we'll make, um, a new agreement, um, with that agreement going away. Um, at this point in time. The other thing that, um, Commissioner Bierke and I spoke about. Is, um. If we're going to have that agreement eliminated, that the city of Grand Forks says on this, um, lot over here on Kitten Avenue, I'll call it. Kitten and, and, and Pitt, across from the police department. And the city got that in a swap. So, um, as you recall, the Franklin Fort went up. Uh, we swapped the Grand Forks Herald lot that we owned. Um, we gave that as part of the project so they could, you know, build it the way they felt it in, in return. We got that lot. And, uh, Mr. Bierke said, as part of this, all these trend, all these transitions, if we could. Um, be able to accept that lot in return. We would have, we have city facilities where public health is here in this building. Uh, we have municipal court at, at the county jail. If we could just agree that, um, you know, there won't be rent, there won't be, you know, service charges if we can agree to swap that lot. So. That's what would be in told in that agreement that we would try to wrap that. One thing added on this is that the city of Grand Forks currently owns, uh, surface parking lot down on Division. So it's right around St. Paul's. Um, church down there. And one of the restrictions on there is that has to remain, um, perfect. Um, and, and that sort of thing. So that'd be the one thing that we, we would ask Mr. Gossett or like Ms. Bombscott to see how we could incorporate maybe a modification of that as part of all these transitions that we're making at this point in time. Um, this, um, Ms. Wall, they're working on upgrading their office suite since they're going to stay here. And, uh, we agreed that we wouldn't go to Franklin Fort. They raised an additional cost and, and the county wanted, um, public health to stay here in this building. They do want to make some upgrades. And so some things that are going on are upgrading some of the. Of the IT services in there. And so that's going on. And that's the reason why we're doing that. That that's can become more of their permanent home. They want to reinvest in that office suite. So that's going on too. So. I would say all that stuff that I talked about right there, Mr. Gossett has, has been willing to create that document and will. Um, will, he'll work it as county counterpart to be able to bring that back in June or July as, as the sheriff's office starts to look to move to their new location. Um, Mr. Basel is here and he's been engaging with, um, he's our building, um, safety director or, or building inspection. Uh, and he's been working with Mr. Manginson. And there was also, um, trying to get an agreement together on, um, inspection services. And so that's the other update here is that I think we, we met in an agreement where. Mr. Basel and Mr. Manginson looked out that. The city will do, um, um, inspections, um, throughout the county. Uh, we'll get paid mileage, we'll get paid wherever that fee is to inspect that. It still will go through the county and ensure that everything's appropriate before we go up there and review it, but they'll check on zoning and all sorts of things. But it'll create an inter- interaction between the city and the county and we'll make that happen. So. Um, we were going to come back with an agreement, um, that would have charged, we would have charged the county so much for our. Um, but in lieu of doing that, what our thought is that we would just do that for mileage and we do do that for, for the fee. And then in return, I, there was, um, that the county would work on, um, septic system. And I know, um, the, um, public health is involved in that too, but we have to work out particulars on that. But it looks like. That's all going to work together where we're going to do some things, the county's going to do something and, and. We're not going to, you know, charge each other other than maybe what our, I don't know about our, 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 or so. I think that's all worked out. I would, you're going to see an agreement on that. We'll, we'll come forward to the county commission. I'll come back to the city council. And, uh, they've been able to wrap up, um, that part of that, like Mr. Bierke and I, um, talked about. Uh, the next thing that was really a big, and I didn't realize this, but we were planning as part of the new, um, dispatch software. Uh, we were going to update our records management system. And, um, what I discovered along the way is that was going to cause that a negative reaction, the unintended. Uh, negative consequence with, um, the state of North Dakota in with our state's attorney's office who's going to require. Uh, two separate systems. It was going to require additional administrative work on the county side. And so what we, we determined we need to do is we're going to pause. We're going to pause upgrading that system. We're going to stay with the state system, which I understand is free. It's maybe not as updated as it should be. But when the state starts to move forward with an updated records management system, we'll join that. And at that point in time. So we're going to pause that so we don't create, um, make ourselves. In a better position, but then make everyone else, else's life, um, more miserable. So we're not going to move forward with that at this point in time. Um. The only, probably the last update I would give is, is on, we are working on the airport. We're working on the airport. I know both of us reduced our mills to the airport, um, for the twenty-five budget. Um, the mayor has it, um, authorized us to move forward with the review as we are working with Grand Forks Airport Authority. On its operation. And does it continue to make sense to have it be an airport authority or is there an alternative strategy? Um, that we should consider and, and those, um, strategies, uh, could include, uh, keeping what we got right now. Um, with the current regional airport authority. It could include. What Fargo has, which is a city, uh, airport authority, or it could also include, should it become a, um, part of the city of Grand Forks. And so. Um, the city and the county agreed to make a regional airport authority back in the late nineteen eighties. And so we're just taking another review at that. I'm sure there'll be, there'll be lots of, uh, opinions on what we should do, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. But we are working on that. And likely will be part of our discussion of our twenty-six budget. And, um, just so you know, whatever we do, we have to be aligned and lockstep with, um, with the county commission on that. With that, um, Commissioner Chair Hagan, that's my update. Lots of good things going on and. Thank you for, uh, um, Mr. Bierke for stopping over and. Pays and concerns and helps we could work together and he's all fired up. And it was just like my, the old days when he's on city council and I got. But with that, we're trying to work together and he, he did really, you know, had, we have done all this stuff down about caring, I already get me all fired up about this stuff. No, I, I wouldn't. I have. So I do really appreciate that. He was probably the last guy I wanted to see on, on morning. But, um, here we are. We got a lot of stuff done. So I, I really do appreciate it. I really, uh. Come forward and, and alien everyone else about here.
Well, I have a couple of comments. First, I want to thank the mayor and Mr. Pielan for this. Uh, I had a little different view because I've been on both sides now. So I knew about some of this. And so I'd also say my fellow commission members, I wasn't attempting to step on your toes. Uh, if you have any comments or issues or, I, I passed all the ball over to Mr. Ford. He's doing this. This is my job to get into this, uh. Down into this nuts and bolts. But, um, I just wanted, I saw some issues I knew about that. Uh, we need to remember that the city residents pay county taxes. Idaho City, I thought the mayor's, and they fully understand the county residents. Coming and spend a lot of money and pay a lot of sales tax. To fund a lot of issues that the city has. So we're one team, one fight. We need to make sure we're working together. As opposed to fighting over, there's no use charging each other because then we're just charging our own taxpayer. We're just. Cutting our nose with spider face. So we need to wo- work together. But I just want to thank him on that. And I, uh. And once again, the fellow commissioners, if they have any questions on this, you know, uh, it's Mr. Ford's involved now. So. Uh, he's running with it. So he will, he'll be, but work with the, uh, the city on getting these, these things worked on. I did put, um. Uh, a couple of points I wanted to bring up is as far as the airport, um. We're at, um. Maybe it's a hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars in this year's budget that we're funding them. And, uh. After reading their financial statement, I don't know why we're doing that. Uh, they don't need our money. They, they've almost two years, uh, with no revenue, still pay all their bills. And so, uh, I, I, I fully support the city looking in those. I think we need to work with them on that. And, uh. I just don't know if we need to continue to fund the city airport, uh. If a certain entity is ninety-five percent of operations, if you need a little more money, I suggest you look at your, uh, current lease agreement. Uh, because I, I just don't think the taxpayers need to continue to pay in for the airport. Uh, uh, it's not like it's falling apart. It's. Physically it's probably its best shape ever. I mean, all the, all the runways have had and everything they've been out there. So. Uh, I, I do think when you look at that in our twenty twenty-six budget, uh, even if it's just. For example, cutting it in half. To give them another eight, not give them eighteen months to get to a point where they know it's going to be zero. And obviously I think we should work with the city on that. Um, uh, and I love travel also. I mean, I, I love to cut. So. Uh, the other thing is on this, uh, on the nest, I, 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 um, I toured it. I, uh, I went through everything and explained how it worked. I, I don't know where the rest you at or at, um. Uh, I have real concerns about the facts that they can go in. Lock up their paraphernalia, which includes illegal substances in a locker. Spend the night, some of them are there a long time, then come back out, pick up their stuff and I'll be blunt. Go get their free needle, government approved for you. And then they go shoot up. Sounds like we're co-experitors here. So I, I don't, I don't get it. So I, I would hope we ponder that because I, I don't see it as a detox center. I see it as a flop house. And so, uh, I think that's something we need to discuss. Once again, if it pays out over time or where we're going on it, but, uh. Uh, I just don't think the taxpayers should just be blunt, help people commit crimes. Yeah, yeah. Kind of, kind of just wonder why we're paying seventy million dollars for sure. Part of it, we're going to assist people a- a- and their illegal activities. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I just wanted to bring that up now too. And as part of the budget discussion down the road and they close once again, I really want to thank, uh, the mayor and Mr. Pielan again, uh. Uh, uh, we had many conversations as the council and, uh, I, I, I don't, I really have a good relationship with you. And we've got along for a long, long time. And we know we're sure to stand, but, uh, he's an honest man. I know I can bring you a thing. And I, when I talk to him, he's a straight shooter. We start, we, we shoot back straight. So, uh. Uh, and the purpose of all this is. To make our city and county better. And that's what we should, that's where, that's our goal is. And so what's kind of a thanking person.
I think it's heartening to see. The, uh, developing relationship with the two entities. Cause we, I totally agree, we should consider ourselves as one. And, uh, so I, I, I love this update. It made my day. Yes. It's, it's, it's good to see that a blossoming. Good, positive relationship. It's only going to save taxpayers. Hey, little word, I'm going to find out if the council on Monday. And so I'll share this update and I'll also share your, your positive and kind words back and I'll hopefully deliver that back to us. Well, thank you. Thank you. And we'll be back. Um, um, maybe with a couple of improvements, I would say that the first one will be this, uh. Building safety inspection, one will come first and then probably later this summer, Mr. Gossett will be here. But Ms. Bombscott, I mean, we'll, we'll talk about that bigger one with all the moving parts. So those are two pretty remarkable.
The one thing I'm glad, I'm trying to add like the, like the planning, we were paying a consultant thirty to thirty-five thousand a year. They're going to take the fees. So all we're going to be able to open the mileage money. So we're going to see a significant savings at the county. By, uh, entering the screaming where they, we're going to share our, our, our services as far as inspection. So. Our budget's going to be reflected in a positive way because we're disagreeing.
Yes. Highlight provision.
Thank you, Chair Hagan. And, um, I also have with me Keith Lund is here from the Grand Forks Regional E D C. Um, Mr. Steve Thomas is here. He's sitting, uh, right next to Keith. He's the, uh, I'm going to call him the site director here in Grand Forks. Uh, his executive director. And then on the phones, uh, Mr. Tomasi, Dante Tomasi, and he's. Um, he's in Duluthie, that corporate headquarters. He needs the corporate affairs, um, person that can answer some questions. So I'm going to start out. Uh, giving overview. He's going to come up here. Um, or no, Steve, you're going to come up after me and just talk about the expansion, what they're trying to do here. Keith will come up. And, uh, provide some further color. And then we're going to ask, uh, Dante to, uh, speak to you and, you know, say why this is important, why this.
So we are excited about Cirrus Aircraft. But, um, I talked about what, you know, they're currently paying taxes at twelve point nine million dollars. They're quite a success story in Grand Forks and. Um, any community would want Cirrus Aircraft because they are, they, they are the premier. Um, manufacturer in their, in their, um, in their realm. So it's incredible that they're here. And what I also talked with Commissioner Bierke and, and I know, um, I've been around Terry and I've worked with them. You know, he's not a big fan of tax incentives. And, but I think on this, this is a component part of, of four reasons why we can move projects forward in Grand Forks and. And, uh, a lot of times I've been honored to be a part of the team to, to move these projects forward. But, you know, the first thing we try to do is, oh, we need infrastructure. And in this case, and I talked about it, epitome energy, I've talked about it, AgriSto. Those are going to have substantial infrastructure that, that the city is going to have to leave. And while we try to bring the state and the, that's part of it. In this case. There's no infrastructure development. So it's an intel development. They're going to expand on their current site, which is really a positive thing for Grand Forks. The other thing we're, we are going to work with on this project, and this relates to the state of North Dakota, the bank in North Dakota. And the, and, and our Grand Forks growth fund, we are going to work on two loans that are going to help, um. Uh, buy down the interest rates on this expansion. And so there's, there's going to be two loans. On that's, that process started this week too. And so we're going to work with them on that. So essentially what they do if, if, if interest rates, it's in the, you know. We work with them with the bank or put in our growth fund, we can, we can get the interest rate down to more, maybe more at a two, three percent of the, the process for competitive. So. We are working with, uh, Cirrus on, on that portion. The tax incentive portion, which is in, in front of you, um, today. And then finally, what I really learned. Uh, in working with Cirrus Aircraft and. Also with AgriSto, the icing on the cake for AgriSto, why did they come to Grand Forks? Because they like Grand Forks better. They like the community. They like the culture. They wanted to be able to come to a plant in Grand Forks versus another community. And that was true. And that was a big deal. So we have a great culture here. And, um, and people like us. And sometimes they even like and respect us more than we like ourselves. So they believe in us more than we believe in ourselves sometimes too. So Cirrus Aircraft is similar. Um, this facility, they want to try to expand all, all the, um, parts that go into a, an aircraft go through Grand Forks. Um, that's a big deal. So they are a, a, a single point of success for their company. If they're not successful in Grand Forks. Um, they're going to be in a challenge. And the fact that they're willing to grow and expand Grand Forks. Um, because they believe in their workforce, they believe in Grand Forks, they believe in growing here is quite incredible. Um, they're at over five hundred employees. And so they're our second largest manufacturer, um, right now. And so if you would have taken them. You know, post recession, um, if by either they were under two hundred employees. Now the fact that they're over five hundred employees and growing is quite incredible. I would say, um, you know, GE, um, wind factory, wind, um, farm. Factory is probably, I would say between six hundred and fifteen points, Simpli's around four employees. So you can see. There, there are second largest, um, job employer. It would be awfully hard to find anybody. Um, to replace Cirrus Aircraft. Um, as part of what, what the incentive is, we tried to close a gap and, um, in working with Keith one, if there was a gap that. Uh, they were looking at our opportunities. They have other facilities around the country where they do things. And there were some opportunities. Um, in other communities where they were being offered, um. Competitive facilities, competitive offers. And so what we did, we started, um, we tried to make ourselves more competitive with these two. Base loans to make our, our growth fund. That's one part that we did. We tried to keep this because, um, as you know, anytime we go over five years on a tax incentive, we've got to go to. Uh, the county and we have to go to the school district. And, uh, we tried not to do that. Uh, and so in this case, we started out with a five-year hundred percent. But to close the gap further from other, um, competitive offers, we went to ten-year hundred percent. Both that final gap. Um, to fortify, um, Grand Forks. As the hub for all of this. And one of our concerns is that they grow and expand here. The other concern we have is that they don't, um, go to another location where they take some of what we have here or future growth. Because you know what's going to happen, um, there is a temptation in to grow another, um, location. And so. We're trying to keep them here with their existing operations or we're trying to keep them here for future growth and expansion. And that was the reason why we, we have in front of you in the city council that approve a memorandum of understanding of. Both this pace funding and also this tax incentive project. And now we're trying to actually do that. The school district two weeks ago, um, did approve the, um, ten-year at a hundred percent. Um, I would anticipate the city council will file a report. They finally approved it. But on June second will be the city council's final hearing and approval of that. But on June second will be the city council's final hearing and approval of that. But I would anticipate all the cases that go for the, the ten year hundred percent also. The other great thing about this project is it's just not this thirty thousand square foot expansion. There's a promise within the next five years. There, there's going to be an additional sixty, ninety thousand square feet expansion on this. We've helped facilitate that over the last few years, um, through, um, they purchased the remaining parts of the building over the last few years. The other thing they've done is they purchased surrounding land, uh, to make ready for, um, this future expansion. We want to make sure they execute on that location. It is a fourteen and a half million dollar investment, um, ten and a half million dollars for the thirty thousand square foot addition. These are all estimates. A million and a half to renovate the existing, uh, hundred and seventy thousand square foot facility. And then two and a half million dollars in capital equipment. And I think when you look at, um, marine, put a financial performance in there with chief, with their estimating that. This investment, um, the real estate portion of the expansion is approximately seven million dollars. So when we talk about that, the, the portion that's relates to the real estate, that's. Um, seven million dollars with additional value. And so you ponder, um, that they're paying, uh, right currently. Cirrus Aircraft is paying about ten thirteen thousand dollars in taxes. Um, we're going to defer with the ten year hundred percent. We're going to defer, uh, approximately about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year in, in additional taxes. And so in twenty thirty six, when this tax incentive would be up this tenure. Um, we were estimating they'd be paying taxes of, of approximately three hundred and forty four thousand. So we're just foregoing that increment. Of, of approximately a hundred and thirty thousand on the part of this investment to make this, um, go forward. Um, so with that, that's what we're requesting. We, we don't like to, um, ask, um. A lot of the county and want to partner, but this is a, a significant ask that we want you to get to yes on this. Um, behalf of the city of Grand Forks, the mayor does, the city council does. And I know Cirrus Aircraft wants to get yesterday, that we think is the right thing to do for the community. So with that, I hand it off. Oh, sorry, speaking. Thanks for the opportunity to come and, and speak a little bit about this, this project. So, um, our, our production facility is, uh, we were at max capacity. We, uh. We are, we're, we're busting at the seams. We, uh, we, 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 we need to install something. We just find an open spot and, and, uh. And, uh, put it in. So when we're looking at our, our long-term growth plan. Uh, we had to really look at the facility, but more importantly, how do we expand, uh, while continuing to keep production going? And so. The, uh, the, this thirty thousand square foot gives us the, uh, the room for tooling. And to move other equipment in that space, uh, to keep production running while we will then, uh. Beginning, uh, the larger, uh, expansion, the sixty, the ninety five square foot. Beginning this first thirty thousand is, is really key for, uh. That to get our, our manufacturing plant set up the, the way it needs to be for, uh, long-term growth and success. And we, we feel that this, this plan set us up, uh, to ensure that composite manufacturing stays in, in Grand Forks. And I think that's the, uh, that's the main goal. So that, that's overview. Are there any questions specific to the expansion that I can, uh, answer before I hand it back over to Mr. One?
Cindy, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Uh, I guess I will, will also say that, um, from the last time expanded was in two thousand and six, if I'm, I'm not mistaken. And, uh, just from, from that, from the time of that expansion, we're, we're producing right now about seventy percent more. Uh, than, than what the, the building was, uh, was really built for. So. Uh, the, this first thirty thousand and then the, the second expansion, uh, we, we feel is, is going to give us, uh. You know, what we need now plus, uh, what we expect customer demand be, uh, five, ten, fifteen years from now. So.
Thank you, President of the Commission, Keith one, the President and CEO of Grand Forks Vision Economic Development Corporation. I'm just going to give a brief overview of the history of Cirrus and Grand Forks and apologize to Commissioner Tannigan and Ruston for hearing this the second time. It will be a piece of it that I forgot the last time. Our relationship early with Cirrus is a thirty year history. Um, they opened their corporate headquarters in Duluth in nineteen eighty four and they were looking at a. Opportunity to really diversify and bifurcate their workforce for corporate headquarters, but they do final assembly. But then another labor pool to do the composite and, uh, composite and, uh, fiber components of the aircraft. Every single, uh, carbon fiber or composite aircraft component, that's kind of Cirrus aircraft have been manufactured in Grand Forks. Since they opened their facility in nineteen ninety six and we immediately impacted by the flood, but they kept, uh, kept, kept growing. Uh, it was really just ten years later that, uh, they saw that their weightless weather products was significantly long, two years, probably closer to three years. And then it took an expansion, uh, ninety seven thousand square feet. So they were up to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Um, it was a different model, a different time and, and the city of Grand Forks was quite aggressive through its charter authority. They actually own the building that Cirrus operated initially. Uh, they issued a sales tax revenue bond to guarantee that facility and help finance that and lease it back to the company for the duration of that bond. In two thousand and six, um, really precipitated and motivated that expansion in Grand Forks and, and we find ourselves in a similar situation today. Uh, we learned as an economic development community, as, as the city, that they were looking and quite frankly, were very near making it announced, but they were going to be opening and expanding in another. Really separating the workforce from Grand Forks to simple as self study for the, the work that they're doing today. And. It really was kind of an all hands on deck and stop everything that you're doing and, and see if we can sort of secure that and bring down all that. So. We work with folks at the state of North Dakota and locally we use every program that we could figure. Uh, we financed some things that the city did when I say we have worked through the city at that time. And, uh, we're, we're successful and included a purchase option that was attractive for the company and convinced them. To turn their attention back to Grand Forks and go back to facilities. So they were at a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. The numbers of the employees were, uh, they were at a hundred and thirty people at that time. And they were looking to go to a little over six hundred. Well, timing is everything in life. It was just a few years later that the Great Recession hits and. You know, the housing economy tanked and, uh, if you were in a luxury market, whether you're selling cars or aircraft or whatever, um, you had a real struggle at that time. And Cirrus went really overnight from having, you know, a long list, a waiting list for the aircraft to. Aircraft on the apron that they were struggling to sell. So the, the relationship between the community, city, county, all the, all the organizations really was never at its highest. I guess during that time when we partnered to help sustain them through that time. Uh, happy to say that they survived that. They became a stronger leaner company through that exercise. This often happens. Uh, and they reorganized and happy to say that they paid everything that was deferred. The city of Grand Forks deferred some rent. And did some other things to make that possible. And, and former leadership of the company has been very public and their appreciation of that. They've said it many, many times. Um, they've expanded a few times along the ways, minor ones, uh, brought in an auto flavor too, to help bring some of the components that they had been outsourced. So the, the growth is happening in Grand Forks and. As, uh, Mr. Phelan said, that they're at five hundred employees now. Um, back to comparisons to twenty years ago in two thousand and six, Cirrus has been offered. Uh, and been approached by other communities and other states that want to have a successful company like Cirrus in their community. They are the leader in single piston aircraft production and delivery in the world. So the global leaders in Grand Forks are what they thought of. So when we hear things like, we're thinking about another location that could steal some of the attention away. And as Mr. Phelan mentioned, where there now are decisions about where growth will occur and even possible disinvestment in Grand Forks, we take that very seriously. Look to see what we can do in order to make sure that again, that have at the Grand Forks. So Grand Forks is the option. And so, uh, to underscore what Mr. Phelan said, uh, moving forward and trying to put a package together that would secure that for Grand Forks for the future and sustain that growth. Um, I know that Mr. Tomasi, I'll turn it over to him just to close. Um, we'll be talking, but, um, you know, the way I look at it and the way we looked at it, uh, back then. Is, you know, nobody knows the future. I think Dante will say that, but if you don't get phase one, you don't get phase two. Phase one doesn't happen, phase two can never happen. And that's what we're looking to try to secure and help Cirrus grow in our community. And I would say that they're looking for. A community that will help be a partner. Have any actual questions about the history or anything that might be able to answer. And we'll turn it over to the screen for Mr. Tomasi. He's the Director of Corporate Affairs of Cirrus.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay? Thumbs up or? Great. Thank you. Um, well, thank you for, uh, having us today. Thank you for considering this proposal. And on behalf of Cirrus, I want to say thank you for the long partnership we've had, uh, working in this community and, 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 and again, thank you for considering what we're happening. Um, I, I think, I think Todd, Keith and Steve really touched on a lot of the major points here and I, and I, I, the only thing I want to compound on. Is, is that internally at Cirrus, uh, you know, we've been excited about this project. We've been excited to, to continue to work with the community and with the county, uh, and the city. Um, to provide this, this hopefully small next step to even a broader expansion, um, in the county. And, um, and as we're doing this, uh, you know, for us, it's, it's, it's sometimes important to recognize that, uh, Steve's advocating, I'm advocating, we're all advocating on behalf of this project. But it still has to get to a, a cold hard business case. Um, and, and that's the thing that, uh, the, part of this incentive package is what's getting us over the hurdle, right? We have to make the cold hard business case of, of why Grand Forks versus other places, why Grand Forks County versus other places. And so. Um, we're getting there. Uh, this is, uh, something we're very excited to build about, build into, um, something that's going to help our process. Um, but a- as a company, we're always required to look at the math. Um, and the math is often comes down from leadership to say, okay, well, what's special about Grand Forks versus other places that are hungrier? That don't have four hundred employees that haven't have, that haven't been there in a way. And so, um, what I'm particularly excited about on this project and. Really have valued working with the city and Keith and, and now the county is, you know, we started this kind of process a while back. And got to look at it. And because of the partnership that we have with this community, um, I was able to go to our leadership and say. You know, Grand Forks is, they're, they're coming to the table. They're, they're, they're doing what they can. Um, and they're, you know, they're demonstrating that they're going to be competitive. I think we should, I think we should do this first. Um, before we do anything else. And, and that's why I'm proud to be here, proud to be a part of this place. I was a, a resident for three years in grad school, um, and. And love the community, love visiting, love coming back and, uh, especially catching a hockey game after, after the, the short time I had as a grad assistant coach there. Um. But, uh, uh, that being said, uh, I'm, I'm here for questions. Um, happy to ask any of the questions of the Commissioners and, and want to thank you again.
Do you want to make your sound?
Sure. I just want to, uh, uh, want to make sure I'm reading the document on, uh. Mr. Long brought to my attention, I might've been reading it wrong. So I want to make sure. I don't like to, I make mistakes. I don't like. Deliberately made mistakes, you understand what I'm saying? So let me, uh, say I want to correct it publicly. Um, page, uh, page number eighty six. Of our stuff. Just, you're on it right now. Uh, you're on it. You got the page right. Uh, it has the breakdown. I, I just want to make sure I'm reading it right because I think I read it wrong. And thanks to Mr. Long for correcting me. Uh. It's, uh, we'll go to the last year of the, uh, projected tax would have been at, at, if they get a total discount. It was fifty three, eight, forty four. Then it goes to eighty six, six, oh, nine. Am I correct? I guess if you missed, I just want to make, am I correct? Cause what you're saying there is that I, I thought it was fifty three. I rounded it off. I averaged it, uh, fifty three, seven. So what, what the real number is, is approximately, uh, thirty two thousand plus. Is, is the, is what's getting deferred for ten, on average, the ten years per year. Is that, is that correct?
Chair Hagan, Commissioner Bjorky, again, I feel a little bit unqualified. This is a spreadsheet, but what we're looking at here, I believe. And Todd, and quickly correct me if I'm wrong, is the revenue that you're receiving now and the revenue that you receive when the exemption falls out. So the thirty thousand dollars is the difference.
Right.
I have a spreadsheet in front of me and I'm not, it's too small and I'm, you know, right. Um. You know, and this might've been a slightly lower valuation, but according to my calculations based on the city's twenty five, twenty one percent. Share of the property tax today, year one, you would be foregoing twenty nine thousand and a little bit of change. And then the last year of this exemption, you know, through some inflation would be thirty one thousand, uh, for an average of just over thirty thousand dollars a year. So. Uh, it, again, it is foregoing some revenue. I, I think maybe the assumption based on the conversation a few weeks ago was that you had included that just a little bit.
Well, no, I made a mistake. So.
I totally know the way I frame that.
No, no, I, I just, I, I read it wrong. It was my fault. So I just want to, cause I said it publicly, I'm going to correct it publicly. So I, I, I thought it was like fifty three, seven. I rounded it off. So the actual number is around thirty two thousand, uh, average. So I, I just want to publicly correct that. So that, uh, I made that correction. Uh, I, I, uh, before we get time to vote, I, uh. For the serious people, uh, I was on the council when you were, back when you were struggling, I was there. Uh, uh, I have a consistent. I, I don't like this tax structure, how we do things. You're playing by all the rules. So. I hope you make a ton of money. I wish all the best for you. But it's just, uh, uh, I just want to say this, the one guarantee I give you Cirrus is. I will never vote to raise your taxes. So you guarantee, you have a personal guarantee. I will never vote to raise the county taxes. Your taxes will not go up, uh, as, as far as, as your valuation goes up. I will do everything I can to drop the mills. So you have a, a, a net zero on that. So that, that's our map. But I, uh, mainly I just want to correct that number. I read it wrong. It was my, my mistake, bad math. Uh, so I just want to correct that publicly. Thank you.
Commissioner, we could use you in Minnesota, uh, you know.
I, uh, my joke about Minnesota is I just, when I drive through, my wife teaches me, we just use the rest areas. I just keep going to, to, to hit a red state. So. It's the truth. I do.
All right. So we need, we have a discussion before we have a motion. Which I have a motion to approve.
So I kind of wish these tax incentives were federally illegal so that, so that, um. Municipalities, cities, counties, whatever, didn't have to battle each other and. Can't dangle the largest carrot. All that being said, it is sort of a, the best example. And I think I said this to Mr. One. Uh, don't hate the player, hate the game that I can possibly think of. I mean, that's, that's the, the game we're playing. I mean, if we don't get four strikes or five strikes, we have to play with only three like every other team. And so I'm going to be in favor of the project, um, with my nose plugged because it, it, it just, I don't like Mr. Bjorky. I don't like the concept of it. Nothing against Cirrus whatsoever. Unbelievable partners. Yeah. And he'd be crazy not to come here now. Crazy not to. You know, and so I totally get, I totally get where you guys are coming from, but I'm going to support it. I'll, I'll support it in the form of a motion.
Yeah, I'll approve the, I'll approve the incentive.
I think we're going to do a roll call vote this time. There's no other for the, the next session. It's to Bjorky.
No.
Miss Peach? Cindy, you still there? I think you're muted.
Sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't hear. Was there a question or?
No, we're just waiting for a vote from one of the Commissioners. We're going to roll call vote.
Oh, okay. I thought that was for me. Okay. Sorry.
I may ask, Scott, sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Motion will pass for one with Mr. Bjorky dissenting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We didn't want to clear a room.
I'm the forty seven.
All right. No?
No.
Oh, my God, I marked it off with the serious. Sorry, my, my bad. I was doodling. Chatting with us today. Chatting with us today.
Chair Hagan, members of the board. I'm here on behalf of the Assessment Center and Administrator Lab in Spain. And I stand for a motion to improve our service agreement and increase rate per day from $225 per year to $350 per year for our county.
Second.
Any other discussions?
Mr. Paul, we get to the budget time, are we gonna, they're going to present an updated revenue? Because it should change pretty significantly.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion passed.
I'd also like to ask the Commissioner, Chair Hagan. I'd like to ask, along with your signature for those, to give approval for Administrator Spain to just ask for, approve any other contract to go through with other counties without having for her to be able to negotiate that, to let them know that we are charging instead of having to pay the TDI or something like that.
So I'm with the Chair's signature to, around the span, we appropriate authority to negotiate.
I think we're swamped.
Thank you. Chairman, just for clarification of the motion, do you want the Chair's signature? Or if you put Mr. Doyle was referencing, he was just comparing.
Oh, I misunderstood. Sorry, thank you for catching that.
Administrator Spain will be able to just sign those contracts whenever we did votes about it.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion passed. Okay, now it really is your turn though.
Commissioners, in front of you are three proposals of various value. Three different projects. First, first and most impactful, I would like to consider the water circulation pumps for the correctional facility. In the project, the the OE equipment, if you will, was in the facility, was left in place intact by engineers, hoping the facility impact of the addition wouldn't overburden the capacity, what the, what the circulation pumps could handle. Far exceeded that nearly running at 100% at Temple Zero with both redundant pumps in and at 94, 95. Cost for that comes in at a total of $119,624. We do have contingency money available in the project still, or would be negatively impacting to the budget. These, that's what's available for the project. This would negatively impact contractors 10% of any balance over. They are requesting the 10%, if they agree to the, if they agree to the keep their, their share of the 10% to it. It would exceed the project. Or a total project cost to be approved.
Well, having a history with a long so a failure has been a cost just significantly important. And 100% failure, Mr. Regent, would you agree with me?
For a number of reasons, I can elaborate a little bit on that as well. We're using our entire capacity, we've already done the CLEF, but we're not even operating at N plus one. Service factors are generally agreed on at about 1.3, 1.5. Share is reserved. If we don't have that reserve there and we're in failure freeze still if we keep operating further. So this year. Not necessarily optimistic yet.
I did not know a lot of those discussions at the contractors meetings and stuff. This, we just need to do this. And I would make a motion to approve that.
We have a first and a second, any further discussion, motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion passed.
Next one I'd like to address is Commissioner Rustich's favorite subject across the street. In the dome project, however, not part of the dome, we have a changed proposal from construction engineers for a window lantol that has failed in the courthouse, causing the window to sag. It's shifted the window. And now we have in between the three layers of glass of the courthouse windows. In between those three layers of glass, because the window shifted partially held open, we have a nice spot for VIs to generate, and they have a way into the building that, well, needless to say, that window keeps shifting, we eventually will have a larger window opening a building than just the shift of the window. Masons to tear out the lantol, pull it back, re-weld in the metal structure behind there hopefully the lantol in place and where the window again. That change proposal cost is $17,077. We do have that money available. See, if the project in Masonry work available, so this one would be impacted to that additional cost to another level of $77.
Make that motion, approve that fix to that window.
We have a first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Third request is a small amount in comparison for in the parking ground. We need to provide a way of access into first level incline for contractors to be able to work under that incline as well as remove their demo product as they're repairing casters on that T-bar connection by that ramp. The solution, the two options that have been proposed, this one, RSI, they want to be involved with all of their spectrum of work. They would, their plan solution would have been a change order of much larger dollar and probably would have cut out the top of the deck for a wider space for tool and mat. The solution for $4,616 would be go in through the maintenance shed, removing the wall and then bringing in a steel door, which we actually have a steel door dual stock that's been around since 2003 in the courthouse, never used. So I would use that door, that framing opening that we would take out that provides means of access and ingress in and out of there for contractors work as well as provides an access for future inspection under that deck again, or any other work that would come up in years to come as well. For $4,660, that, that will cost us to do this work. And talking with Debbie Nelson, she recommended put it towards capital improvements, we'd be over budget because we've got capital improvements and we balance that with that grid forward then. When we balance the year. It means, Ms. Moore, I pointed out to you earlier today that over $1,000 parking round fund, I would recommend we take it out of that.
Yeah.
She agrees. Prove, prove parking round fund.
Second.
All right, first and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion passed.
All three of these require signatures, like we did.
Madam Chair, members of the board. A few items today. Now, what I had on here is a legislative update for the board, now I see Mr. Paul as one as well, two, should I wait or go through the highway one? You got qualifications. Okay. I'm ready to take it. It's all right. Well, last week, Association of Counties had a great update and I actually listened to the whole thing. Lot of changes for highways, some good, some not so good. A few of the big changes, we have a change to the motor vehicle tax, motor vehicle tax fund. And they figure it's going to be a slight increase. The problem is, I don't know what those numbers are going to be until the end of June. Association of Counties doesn't know what it's going to be yet. I can't give them an exact number of what we could expect. So I don't know what to do with budgets on that. The Flex Fund has an increase as well too, now that's the fund that we paid Eagle Avenue with on Trail Company line. And I also have, we have a bridge in Gilby that got funded as well too. And I have, that's part of the request later today, but that fund that increased, but they also have a direct distribution in there as part of it as well too. But I don't know what number that's going to be yet until the Association of Counties gives that to us in the end of June. Legacy fund distribution, this, this one's a little unfortunate, they took it all away. And they took it away and they gave it to people of the state of North Dakota, which isn't unfortunate, but fortunate for the Highway Department. Two years ago, we got almost a million dollars for road purposes, but now it's owing property tax relief. The Prairie Dog Fund itself, I'm happy it's still around because there was a while it was proposed to be completely removed. That was lowered 30%, so our 5.3 million we just got a couple of months ago would be lower to about 3.7 million. That's the estimate, however, it moved up in priority. So the state of North Dakota had a big $400 million bucket that went for the SIP. Mr. Paul, if I say anything wrong, please correct me. That bucket got removed, so there's a better chance of us getting a little bit lesser money, but we still get a substantial amount of money. Another change that doesn't affect us a lot at the county here, but part of the Prairie Dog is townships got money before in a lump sum, now it's based on certified mileage. It's estimated that that's going to be good for us, we're a well-developed county. Being our township roads are built up and we have a lot of them. So I believe that's going to be a positive for us as far as infrastructure overlying the county. The 3 cent gas tax did fail along with increased weight limits. So overall, we're still waiting on some decisions from Association of Counties. Any questions?
We'll come back when it's ready to.
Yeah. So we're supposed to have budgets submitted at the end of the month? I don't, I'll have to just go with what we know for now and make adjustments as we know. I don't have much of a choice on that. Okay, next item, Prairie Dog Project, so like I said, in March, we got 5.3 million. Last year, we obligated just about 3.7 for some box culverts and overlay and chip seal projects. That leaves us with 1.7 million left over unobligated. Our department proposal is to overlay three portions of road and that would use up the remaining funds. Might ask why we're not picking more bridges? Well, we do have a healthy bridge program in our county this year. We're doing well, better than most years. Our department itself just started our fourth rehab today, or yesterday. And we want to try and buy up some inferior projects with this amount of money. It's easier to buy up some smaller bridge projects with box culverts. Our current proposal would be is to take County Road 2, 5.2 miles from the top of our village goes south to County 6, that's estimated to be a million. Do an overlay on County 5. This is a old stub road, we call it Old State 44, but basically a remnant of highway before the interstate. This County 5, north of Mandeville, that's estimated to be 240,000. And the last chunk we would propose to do is County 6, that's two thirds of a mile from County 8 to the country club. All told, those estimates would be 1,370,000. If approved, the project would have to be publicly bid. We'd probably be bringing this back to the board in July. Now that's late to be bidding. So I would propose that we would have this due the end of next year. We give contractors plenty of time, if they want to get it done this year, great, but they could do it next year as well. It's okay for Prairie Dog money, we don't have any sunset clauses on that funding. The other thing I would also ask is, we could use part of this funding to do the construction engineering on. You're asking all about Prairie Dog, later in the packet, I do. I would like to ask for hiring a consultant to do construction engineering on 81. All told, if this was approved and the construction engineering, that puts us 60,000 in the hole. Maybe 100,000 depending on how the bids come in. We would make up the amount of our own construction, but it's hard to pick a project and hit that exact number, it's just possible. It's difficult to do that, so. Any question?
A little pool. Second.
We have a first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, if you say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion passed.
Thank you. The next item I have on the agenda is department hours. Our department is going to go first, is going to make a request to adjust our department hours to four 10-hour days throughout the summer. For the memorable past, our department has had four nine to four as our standard operating hours. We did a poll of our, all of our employees and 10 offered this, if this is approved, just so the board knows, 10 offered to start half an hour early, go half an hour late. 16 offered to start an hour early, no employee ordered to stay an hour late. No employee was against the change at all. Date of change, I would like to leave that flexible. And the reason is, I'll compare last fall to the fall of May 17. Last fall, we were able to keep doing construction work all the way up until just fall Thanksgiving. Fall of 19, we got that first snowfall, that first week of October and winter was here. It's two full months production. Those are two extremes, but it is an example of the efficiencies we could gain with some flexibility. If you, if the board would like a date, we can go with a date. But we're happy being a little bit more conservative side. Um, but we're happy for being a little bit more conservative side, um. And it is a wish Sheriff Snyder voted and we, our proposal would be to treat. Um. Friday like it's Saturday, and if there's an emergency, people get a hold of nine one one for Sheriff's Department and they have our number. And get a hold of it and deal with it that way. I would move approval with the dates being your discretion.
Second.
First and a second, any other discussion? Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passed.
Thank you. Uh, the next item I have, it is construction engineering on the low water crossing we have west of Gilby. I think it was implied, but I wasn't sure, so that's why I'm here asking. Uh, Hyrum KLJ, they did the preliminary engineering on the project, they've been our engineer on it. Um, to do the construction engineering on that, on our, that project as well too. County does pay twenty percent of that project, so if we did, I'd estimate our construction engineering to cost us eighteen thousand. Of which we are budgeted for accordingly, I was planning on doing that as well too, um. No question? Move. Back up.
Okay, first and a second, any further discussion? Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passed.
Thank you, I'd like to make another motion. If the, if if the uh. Experiment with the hours isn't working for you, I would like to make a motion that you have the ability to revert it back to wherever, however you see fit.
I I think that was in the document that he he maintains control.
Yeah, okay.
For any, if if something comes up, he can revert back.
Yeah.
At any time.
Okay.
To emergencies or scheduling or weather or whatever, he, he, they know that this is what it is, but. The grand playbook can change it.
I retract. I didn't. Yeah.
Right.
My last request would be, last being we approved um that role to do a million overlay on eighty one. I would ask that we use our Prairie Dog funds to pay for the construction engineering on that project as well. Okay.
Second.
Right, first and a second, any further discussion? Alls in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passed.
Thank you, that is all I have.
Anything else? Rachel.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is my word.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Um, so I I by uh the Commission's directive, I have another portion of a legislative recap. And about Ms. Leon to contribute as well, and in case I miss anything, she helped me prepare this, this important summary. I'm not gonna go through the entire report that was in your packet, I think I'll just hit some highlights that are the most relevant to the commission and then. Are happy to answer any questions, um, but the, as you know, legislative session closed on May third, that's seventy four days, over a thousand bills are introduced. States at a budget of twenty point three billion dollars, the three biggest focus areas were infrastructure needs, property tax relief and economic development. Um, I think the the biggest of those three though, we can all agree is was probably property tax reform. Took up the, a a lot of the session, a lot of the meeting. And that came through in the formal House Bill eleven seventy six. So what, what, what the uh, what House Bill eleven seventy six now has is the, a primary residence credit up to sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, political subdivisions are capped at three percent, uh, and to kind of dive more into that three percent, what those restrictions look like. Uh, that is, and been visiting with Aaron Burris from the Association of Counties, that's a three percent cap in growth of dollars levy. Or three percent cap on taxable valuation growth, so this is not. A cap on budgets, it's a cap on how much the commission can levy on property tax. Um, political subdivisions can carry over an unused percentage to use once within five years. Um, a public vote in the general election is required, uh, if uh the county or political sub wants to exceed that three percent. And if that were to be approved, that would be good for four years. Um, budget hearing notices will replace estimated tax notices. Uh, and um, there will be an interim study to study the potential impacts of the caps on political subdivisions. Any, any questions on, on Houseville eleven seventy six?
I said one question on the sixteen hundred, I, I've heard that it's gonna start this year, so, I'm not sure it's correct, so the. The bill they get around Thanksgiving, usually when it gets mailed out. For their property tax for the next year, so that's sixteen hundred dollar credit, then a five hundred.
Yeah.
It's gonna be sixteen hundred, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's one, so, wanna make sure everyone knows that, so it's uh, we signed up before March for the five hundred, but now it's gonna be sixteen hundred instead.
Is there, and as Ms. Nelson used to, is that, that's correct?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And as Ms. Nelson used to always encourage every week, people need to go to these. Yes, and apply for it, and we'll, we'll make sure that we constantly blast that out. Um, regarding public health, um, there was a focus on behavioral health in this session. Uh, twelve point nine million was, was added, uh, and that will provide twenty four. Inpatient psychiatric behavioral health beds at all true, so the all true hospital will, will benefit from that expansion. Um, Mr. Magnuson was here, but um, he had to, he had to exit brief abruptly. But Senate Bill twenty two sixty seven regarding septic tanks, that is a a bill that the commission did weigh in on, uh, the commission account was opposed to that bill. It did pass, so what that does is transfers policy responsibility to uh North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, but permitting with, the permitting will remain with the local authority. House Bill thirteen thirty nine was another uh one of the county's legislative priorities, that is a bill that the commission did weigh in on, and that was rural ambulance service district requirements. Um, essentially what that would have done was take a Northwood Deaconess Healthcare Center and exempt them from having to create. An additional board and an additional ambulance district. It failed, uh, and so um, Northwood Health, Northwood Deaconess Healthcare Center is in the process of. Uh, being to remedy that situation, so it's, it's, to clarify, it's not another tax, but it's really a fellow layer of bureaucracy. Um, so Northwood Deaconess will already has a board of directors, they have a budget, they own the ambulance, they'll now have to go and create another. Board of Directors, go oversee their ambulance service, um. Um, the state has, since twenty thirteen, has provided the county a grant to invest in Grand Sky Infrastructure. Uh, we're grateful to the state and our partners for that, obviously, uh, this year, uh, there will be two point five million. Uh, available to Grand Forks County to invest into the Grand Sky Infrastructure. Um, also, House Bill fifteen twenty four uh makes grants available to regional. Uh, Development Councils such as Red River Regional Council that we partner with. Um, Corrections was also another big um focus area of this session, especially Grand Forks County. Um, and it was really about overcrowding and um reform. So House Bill thirteen forty four, this really, we're kind of ahead of this in a lot of ways, allows. The Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to enter into contracts with political subdivisions to house states that's inmates for overcrowding. And it allows them to negotiate terms with counties, so we, we're, we're already in the process of doing that. Uh, I've been giving Sheriff Snyder a gray hair, um, House Bill.
Exactly.
Oh, yes.
On page one fifty three of everything, it stated that the DOCR was improving, uh, increasing the daily fee. To a hundred and fifteen dollars a day, uh. A, will that count for the seventy two beds, or do we need to look into that? Because B, if we do, but in my math right, that's three hundred ninety four thousand, two hundred dollars per year increase, so do we know where that stands with, as far as the seventy two?
Oh, I mean, I can infer to Ms. Womsted, but with, with the, what we committed to was, was it a hundred and five? Dollars a bed, is what I'm saying, so to answer your questions, sir, no, that, that doesn't impact the, the lease where entering.
Okay. Have we signed that, we said?
No.
Well, I was just saying, they just, they just volunteered to raise it.
Yeah.
So we should tell them, we'll be happy to, team spirit, give them a hug, and take the one fifteen of it.
Yeah, that's what we need to.
Miss your beauty members of the board, um, I think Senate Bill twenty fifteen um is more in relation to that overflow due to over. Crowdfunding of the state penitentiary, um, so it certainly could apply to some inmates in our facility, but it wouldn't necessarily be those seventy two beds. Um, that we negotiated with the state at a, at a different rate.
Strike.
We could, uh, and I can work with Sheriff Snyder on negotiating two contracts, negotiating one at the um. Rate we've agreed to for the seventy two bed and then negotiate others for the daily rate, so.
It was a discussion, but I had had with Mr. Dirk as well, with two hundred and thirty dollar amount, but seventy two that we had and then the additional overflow. They know about it.
Thank you, um, House Bill eleven ninety seven, this was another bill that the county was tracking, uh, would have introduced. Introduced as a fifty million dollar uh um program for jail improvements, this was later amended into a study. And then House Bill twelve thirteen, another bill we were tracking, uh, would have uh introduced two hundred million in low interest loans to counties. For jail improvements, that bill did fail, unfortunately. Um, Senate Bill twenty three ninety eight, uh, also known as the encroachment bill or military land use planning, that was another bill that the uh. The commission supported, uh, this bill was amended many, many times over. Uh, eventually passed, but it creates military compatibility committees, as far as I know, that. That committee is not formed, there's been some discussion about it falling under the North Dakota Military. Uh, Council Committee, which is appointed uh by the governor, and actually, uh, Mr. London and, and I sit on that committee. Um, it does allow for counties, township, cities to establish these military impact zones. Um, however, the, these zones must be identified through compatible use study, which is, Leon, I'm gonna breathe you on momentarily. You know, we're, we're working on that, uh, and then back the blue grant, um, we're, we're fortunate that that was funded again. Three point five million for law enforcement retention bonuses. So that's.
Say it all more time louder.
Uh, three point five, yes, sir, retention bonuses for law enforcement, three point five. Um, so that's my, a very high level, Ms. Leon, and did I miss anything, or?
I think one thing that I would just highlight, um, and I put it up, it's in regards to those, um, the tax credits, the primary residence tax credit, um. Let me make sure I got the right, let me pull that again, it will be retroactive, um, as there were certain. Households that didn't qualify in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, those held by trusts, life estate purchased under contract for deed. So there'll be about, um, three thousand nine hundred initial residences that will qualify for this tax credit from twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, so we got something that. Residents of the county should be aware of, I think it also indicates, uh. A, a piece in the property tax conversation that we heard a lot of legislature, which was that this is not a one and done. Sort of solution, um, we're probably going to be hearing a lot more about, uh, primary, um, residence credits, taxes, uh, property tax relief. Especially as the study occurs, and so, um, to Mr. Rupie's point about, uh, an ongoing legislative committee from, from the county. I think that that will be important to watch, uh, because there are still six days left in the biennium for the legislature to meet. They could have more conversations during that time, or I'm assuming that conversation will begin again in twenty twenty seven, whether it's tweaks or they decide to go a whole different route, so. As you all from the county commission here constituents about the property tax relief. Um, I'm sure Mr. Beercliff had a lot of comments along the way, um, those would be great things to mark down and keep note of for going into twenty twenty seven. I mean, yeah.
I have one question, I, I know it wasn't technically under the CDIC, but they all got together, they're different. The CDICs of the different cities, whatever they call themselves, and they were looking for a significant funding increase, I know they got some, I don't know what total, could you, uh, could you? Could you email us out where we're. Where we're sitting with that, and, and then I guess when it comes time to budget, uh. Where we're at with that, as far as what's, what's the state due, I, I know they did something, I, I just. Cause they were, they keep changing, I meant they were just constantly, every day they meant changed everything they were doing the day before, so I don't know where it's at, but I, I did read. One document, one point, they had a pretty significant increase to those groups funding. So we just can, you get an email, you can find out what that is, where we're at, maybe talk to them too, just so we know, especially some budget time.
Yes, sir, and that would have fallen under the Department of Health and Services budget, so, yeah, well, I'll follow up on that, I don't remember the budget, I'm out, good sir. Uh, and, any other questions on, on that, if not, I'll move on, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay, uh, quick project ultra update, uh, so we're nearing the end of task order number two. And task order number two did require uh test flights before the final live flight from Grand Sky to Cavalier Space Force Station. Um, those test flights took place between April twenty sixth and May first, all flights were published despite some weather days. Um, little tidbit, picking up the word from Mr. West, um, the longest flight. Went four hundred and sixteen nautical miles, I think that's roughly four hundred and thirty miles. Um, it was just under eight hours, seven hours, fifty minutes, uh, and all of this was done on three gallons of gas. So pretty amazing technology, but, but most importantly, our program sponsor, Mr. Taylor and the Pentagon, we're very pleased. With what he saw, so I'll, the, the final live flights will be later this summer. If, um, any questions on Project Ultra, I thought I'll, I'll keep going, Madam Chair. Uh, a quick update on the Pioneer Room, Ms. Hallerson and I did have a call with HPN last week. We did receive a brief demo of how that equipment would work. Uh, I did ask them to make it as simple as possible, since I think I'll be the default operator, it'll be a pretty good system, uh, we're looking forward to it, we're targeting the, uh, the final. Or second to final week, July twenty first for um installation, and then there's gonna be another week reserved. In case they have to come back for any kind of troubleshooting, so that implementation week will include training on, on those who may be using it, such as IT staff, myself, as Leon. Um, but that's coming down, coming nicely, uh, and on that.
What, what was the date again, you said?
Uh, week of July twenty first, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, and then July twenty eighth would be the coming back for any, any troubleshooting or any unanticipated issue. And then, um, with that, I, I'm gonna give it over to Ms. Leon for the DCIP updates and the compatible that.
Sheriff Snyder members of the commission, uh, it is included in the packet, um, but just kind of a recap, so there, um. The Defense Community Infrastructure Program Grant was the grant for the fire station out on Grand Sky from the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. Uh, that was awarded in an agreement that was signed in September of twenty twenty four, this is the conversation that, uh. Was happening when I interned at the county in twenty nineteen and spend a priority, I believe, of Grand Sky since Grand Sky's inception. Um, as the fire response on Grand Sky is currently served, um, by Grand Forks Air Force Base in the city of Grand Forks through a joint agreement. Uh, it's not sufficient for the type of flights and the efforts that they need out there, uh, a lot of their tenants have to have. Waiters for their flights, um, because there isn't sufficient fire response, additionally, Grand Forks Air Force Base, um. Upon the same timeline, has had concerns about their fire response on their, um, portion of. The installation that has housing, has ammunition storage, et cetera, uh, and so that's, we got some points applying for grants altogether. Um, prior to applying for this grant, Grand Forks County and Grand Forks Air Force Base, we strategized. Um, that the county would build the fire station using federal dollars, um, and provide the equipment, three weeks of secret equipment and Grand Sky dollars. While the air force would provide the man, the manpower and staff it, and due to unforeseen. Uh, changes in the air force staffing requirements and some challenges that happened, um, kind of over last summer and before, um. Everything was finalized in the grant, uh, those. Changes made, so they were unable to provide staffing by the originally planned over the date of October twenty twenty six. Um, and for this fire station to be built, per the grant. per the grant agreement, it does need to respond uh to Grand Forks Air Force Base and Grand Sky at air force standards. And so since that, since that's in September, October, Grand Forks County, Grand Sky, Grand Forks Air Force Base have been working all together to find a solution uh for staffing both in the long term and in the short term. Uh, we've been in close communication with our project manager, um, with the grant agency, OCC. Uh, and the leadership at OCC is briefed on the staffing discussion and agreeable to an extension in the original construction timeline. Originally, we were looking at starting construction this May twenty twenty-five and completing construction in October of twenty twenty-six. And they are very comfortable with us pushing that back to a construction start date of May twenty twenty-six and a construction end date of October twenty twenty-seven. Um, in order for us to have in place the staffing agreement beforehand, because that's a priority of the county. Um, no ground will be broken and uh no dollars will be expended by the county until we have a staffing plan and agreement in place, so that we don't have an empty building sitting there without any um manpower in it. And to add on to that, um, per grant restrictions, awarding awarded funding must be expended and the grant must close by September twenty twenty-nine. So even with the twenty twenty-seven finish, um, we'll be ahead of the grant schedule in terms of a hard deadline. So currently where we are at in conversation with Grand Forks Air Force Base is that we have a drafted memorandum agreement uh that states that the Grand Forks Air Force Base would provide staffing uh for that fire station. It is now with um council and it's been reviewed by Ms. Longstead, um, Tom here, uh, Grand Sky, other partners, um, and it's been sent for redlining to George Schlossberg, who we work with at the county often. Um, to make edits and then send that back to Grand Forks Air Force Base. The goal is to have a signature on that um in June, and once the signature is on that document, the air force can then go out and say um, we need to provide money for the station and that gets the ball rolling on that end. That being said, and we've been working closely with uh, the air force base with them, we've also been talking with other partners to look at other solutions, um, if not just a one streamlined approach. Uh, so with the assistance of county consultant, Mr. Tim Curry, who used to be the commander of the Grand Forks Air Force Base. Um, we've also been meeting with congressional leadership, who are very aware of the conversations that we're having, air force leadership, um, local municipalities, North Dakota Air National Guard leadership and Grand Sky tenants, all to discuss um possible avenues for staffing and funding. And so right now what we're looking at, um, is we have different lines in the water essentially. Um, with all partners really wanting to get to a yes and find that final solution, we just simply aren't there yet to start the construction, even if we were to get an agreement in place as well, or you know, find that staffing um today, we still wouldn't be looking to start construction until next week anyways, just with staffing or um construction timeline and RFPs and such. So that's kind of where the conflict is at right now. Tom, do you have other data?
Yeah, that was excellent. Um, there's just three points to to leave the commission with on this briefing here on this subject. Uh, Ms. Leon, I wanted to provide you an update for a number of reasons, but there is maybe some rumors going around too that we wanted to address. So just just for the commission's awareness again, the base had the county is not asking for firefighting pilots. Grand Forks Air Force Base is asking for them, we're supporting. Uh, we're not going out to the air force and asking for it. We are supporting the air base's request. They have assurances and it's confirmed that they are light on firefighting personnel. They would just happen to staff this fire station being built by the county. Um, the base was gonna staff it and unfortunately, as Ms. Leon said, soon as we got the grant approved and and Jerry Egan signed it, the NDA changed manning requirements on us. So it's it's again, the county, we didn't just apply for a grant, hope it would get staffed. And 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 as I've said to a few commissioners, this could happen regardless of where we were at in staffing, once those manning requirements change. This is the predicament we're in. Um, and so those are the big ones is as 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 we're visiting and and with base leadership and other partners, we're supporting the air force's request. They are light and it's been validated by ACC. And so that's that's where that Ms. Leon's right, we're gonna get this done, just we're having to take a detour to get there.
I think at the end of the day, it'll be a great public-private partnership style agreement, but it's a lot of work in parts at this point in time. Any questions from the commission on that or any recommendations that I can make? I'll jump into the compatible use study. Um, so this is actually something that would be funded. This additionally would be funded through OCC, um, so same entity that is playing the fire station. Um, they're wanting to work with us on as many projects I think have been across the line for the community, which is wonderful. We really appreciate that. Uh, so a compatible use study, we're developing a grant application to conduct a study on the areas surrounding Grand Forks Air Force Base. Um, and like I said, it'd be funded through OCC. Um, they also funded the county's twenty twenty-two military insulation resiliency study. If any of you have remember that or have seen that document, that was identifying resiliency issues surrounding Grand Forks Air Force Base. Uh, this is kind of a add-on to what was done in that twenty twenty-two study. Um, most communities already have compatible use studies in place, might not have compatible use study that was funded through OCC that they completed in twenty fifteen. Um, and so what it's really meant to do is to analyze and provide recommendations for removing any compatible community development surrounding a military installation that might have uh any negative impacts, mission or personnel. Uh, that's been kind of a priority of the county commission, I would say, even over just the past year, whenever it comes to conversations of encroachment for an investment, um, wind power, et cetera. So a study of this sort would analyze all of those areas um and come back with recommendations to be working very closely with county planning and zoning um base planning and development, as well as um local jurisdictions to produce this report in this study. Um, it also goes hand in hand with the efforts that the state has been um making, especially throughout the most recent legislative session. Tom mentioned it during the legislative update, but um Governor Armstrong did sign HV twenty-three ninety-eight, which is uh military impact uh or military compatibility commission, and that bill really aims to prevent encroachment by establishing military impact zones around the perimeters of installations in the state. However, um, the PISA century code requires that those military impact zones, they are defined by uh a compatible use study. So in order to take advantage of that legislation, we do need to conduct plenty of studies. And so therefore, um, the county is working on pursuing this grant. Uh, the grant is funded at a ninety percent federal, ten percent county rate. So it's not like the fire station where that is fully federal in terms of construction. That being said, the MIR study was uh conducted, that was conducted in twenty twenty-two, so that inclusion is listed grant. That was funded at the same level of ninety-ten, and the county contribution um was able to be provided completely in kind with uh Mr. Ford uh time spent on it with, I believe, Ms. Nelson's time spent on it as well as with uh travel that um Mr. Ford was doing for the Association of Defense Communities and other sort of meetings. And so that was, it um, no money directly out of the pocket out of to the county and we aim to uh do the same for this grant. That being said, I I know we do have partners who have said that they are also willing to pitch in about local community contribution. So right now, uh, we're working on finalizing the grant application with our project manager. Hopefully having a final application ready for your review um and approval. And the second meeting is June or the very first meeting in July will be the goal. And then at that time, um, we would have an anticipated budget in place, the scope of work, et cetera. And we're also running this by uh our partners at Grand Forks Air Force Base at Grand Sky, uh, to make sure that the work that we'll be doing encompasses all of their concerns as well.
Always remember that once again, go up to that base retention line, is there, make sure you get it uh as covered, pay us back even for your backdoor, whatever they, it's sitting there. So let's uh Mr. Ross will be over like a cheap suit, just tell him no. He's on that boat. So uh, I think it has to be committed that the part that the early part committed, run out the commitment date, doesn't have to be spent, but I believe it has to be, has to be committed by next month if I'm correct. So I would put us down for up to ten percent and ask for it, make it committed, set it aside.
I'll follow up with Mr. Wilford.
Thank you. This long term we're up, but is there any way that we could take a two-minute recess to use the rest?
Sure, we want to come back to focus for the next part.
All right, Ms. Longstead. You have a floor, ma'am. Yes, we are. I'm chair member of the board. Um, the item I have to address with the board is the county procurement policies. You recall at the last meeting, um, the board approved this policy. Uh, and the the primary push behind approving this po- policy was that the auditors wanted the county to have a policy that outlined federal requirements for when we're spending federal, county, state requirements for uh when it's local fund and so on and so forth. Um, prior to this, the county did have a very shortened suite policy. So to say that, um, you're calling repeal um at the time of approving this policy. Uh, if you look to page twelve of this policy, the very last page, um, the last section um borrowed the concepts from the old policy and incorporated them into this policy under uh the title authority. Basically, this addressed the authority of um department heads to uh make expenditures within a certain dollar amount. Um, so what the prior policy provided was a similar structure, but lower threshold. So that was incorporated into this policy at a higher threshold, uh in an effort to kind of modernize um those numbers from what was previously in place. Um, since this policy was approved, um, a number of questions have arisen about uh the logistics of this and um kind of the burden it would provide on on Mr. Ford and and the auditor's office to approve um what's often kind of routine expenditures for certain departments that make larger expenditures um as a part of their budgeted allocation. Um, so the decision was made to brought, bring this policy back to the board, to maybe hopefully have a more robust conversation about um what your wishes are in regards to this section of the policy and explore whether or not you would like to reevaluate on this section. Um, there's a, there's a number of different ways you could address this. Um, we could strike that last section altogether. Um, an alternative would be to increase the dollar amount threshold so that those common purchases um that are kind of more routine and certain departments budget um wouldn't have to, those departments wouldn't have to request the approval of the auditor and the uh Director of Administration uh for those ru- routine items. Um, another option would be to uh nearly require the approval if it's a purchase that's outside of their already approved budget. So naturally, the board approves a certain uh budget for each department. Uh, you could have as as the policy that if it's outside, what's already been approved by the board, then they'd have to bring it back. Um, so it, you know, a few different options. And I'm kind of open to answering any questions you have or uh any ideas you might have for what you would like to see in the section of the policy.
I like option C.
I said a question on like things like you bid and stuff, they still have to bring that there up here, right? Yeah, if you bid, like if you're doing bids and stuff, say you were buying for a car, whatever, you're doing bids, anything that's bid, whatever that might be, that's still gonna have to come up here then, right, for approval by the commission?
Correct.
Okay.
Something that um went through the public bidding process, the acceptance of the bid would be the board of commissioners.
So you, so you were saying that uh just change it to where if it's uh out, uh, it's out of the budget. Well, they kind of have to do that anyway. I don't think, I mean, it's just kind of a, that's a defa- you know, that's a fallback decision. They can't spend more than much on your budget. So if it's ten dollars, if they're out of their budget, they're gonna have, somebody has to sign off on it. Is that right?
I think what the historical practice has been is that if it's not in that department's budget, they would come before the board um for a budget.
Okay, so is there, uh, are we looking at pick numbers, say, I don't know, if it's not in their budget and it's ten thousand or less, the not in their budget and it's ten thousand or less, the one of you two would sign out of the finance or administrator or both would sign off if it's more than ten thousand and come to I. What, what are your thoughts on that? Because I mean, I don't know if we want to vote on a ten dollar bag of pants.
No, but I think Mr. West wants to comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, so I was one of the departments that had a little concern with this, just for instance, last week we had a hundred and four thousand dollars worth of being delivered, eleven thousand dollars worth of road tax, one thirty eight thousand dollar culvert, forty eight thousand dollars worth of cutting edges and part of eighty thousand dollars worth of timber delivered. So that stuff.
Don't your budget go?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Hundred percent in our budget, stuff that is, um, in century code would require us to get quotes, I get quotes, of course. But there's century code that just deals with highway departments. So like if, if we have a project or anything really that we spend fifty thousand or more, we have to get quotes, anything over two hundreds a public bid. A piece of equipment over a hundred thousand has to be a public bid, but we've also we've expanded that to any significant change piece of equipment, so there's a little bit of judgment call that comes into that. We, I, or I have interpreted that as kind of anything with a motor, we would bring to the board to a pickup. We bring to the board for consideration. I'll be honest, through the years, I've bought, you know, more attachment for the skid steer. I did not bring that to the board. Um, maybe I should, if I didn't, um, so I, I'm just thinking like what was delivered last week, I would have, the way our current policy is written up, I would have needed permission from a couple other, um, county members that historically we haven't, that would just be by discretion.
So, but, but if we went out of the budget, I'm looking at, should we pick a number, a lower number that up to this amount? It would be done administratively, if it's higher, it would come to the commission, that's what I'm trying to, to look at. I guess, I'd like input from the staff on that.
Madam Chair, here's your heat. Sixty three Longstead and I and Mr. West and Leon, we met about this last week, another uh, example or option that was out there was we use Mr. Gresheski's, uh, roughly forty five hundred dollar request today. Uh, one was if it's within a certain threshold, so Mr. Gresheski doesn't have five thousand dollars to make a repair in his budget, then he come to the administrator and I talked to the Director of Finance and Tax and, oh, we have four hundred thousand dollars in the parking ramp revenue fund. So instead of bringing that to the commission for four thousand dollars, the Administrator and the Director of Finance working together can identify another fund that would be appropriate. The other thing is, um, there was an example a while ago where there was a smaller uh, capital improvement project, I can't remember the example, they qualified for, I think it was last year. It could have fallen under risk assessment, so I reached out to this deal. Do we have money in risk assessment? Do you think this is all by, she said yes. So I think there's some options too where we don't have to bring every little thing back to the commission. If the administrator, whoever that is, one, you know, now and one day and by an tax, identify another appropriate fund, but I think if it's just completely outside Mr. West's budget and we can't identify something, then yeah, like, like Ms. Wong said, now you're looking at a budget, that, that's a commission decision, bidding, mission decision, following.
Well, I would like to have it set up so that pick a number, whatever that number everyone's comfortable with. If it's out of the budget and below that number, it can be handled administratively. If it goes above that, we decided above that, then we should vote on it. So I don't know what that number is now, I, I'm open, I, I don't know what, what the staff thinks.
I think there should be a, uh, sense of urgency piece to it, like, you know, because certain projects, like for instance, Bill has a major failure outside of budget or Nick has a failure outside of budget. And let's say it's, it's above that threshold that we decided upon. Do we really have to wait possibly two or three weeks for another meeting? To give approval to something like that if it's, if it's time sensitive.
If it's time sensitive, we always have a special commission.
Yeah, I was hearing about just, I mean, I mean, I can exaggerate the other way, but I, I, I don't want six figures plus being spent, even if it's somewhere, then you know what, we'll all get on the phone or show up here or whatever. I, I, I like to find a, a number, I, I don't know, ten thousand, I, I'm totally open to it, but I guess I know when, if it gets too high where I'm going to be at all that, I could, I could set that, so I'm looking for a number, I guess.
Chair again, Commissioner, you remember the commission, I think you're talking for right now falls outside of what's actually addressed, they're specified on page twelve. So under the authority, it specifically says if sufficient funds are available. It's specific to you having the funds, so for example, uh, with the sheriff's office, I guess I'll give an example, it usually falls under, uh, purchases for our drone team. If we're sitting there on October, November and we have ten, twelve thousand dollars, uh, yet in our budget for the UAS team, we will, what we've done in the past since that was not something that we allocated money for in our drone budget, but we had the money remaining, we would send an email request to the auditor, to Ms. Nelson stating, we'd like to purchase X out of this budget because it exceeds the five thousand dollars, do you approve? And Ms. Nelson, I don't want to speak for her, but she would check that line item, verify we don't have any other expenditures coming out of there. She would send an email back stating, yes, I approve. So that is not outside of the budget. The, what I believe, Miss, I don't want to put words in Miss Wong's mouth, but this section regarding the authority is specific to if funds are available.
Well, I think we're debating about just deleting that totally, is what, what I was talking about, so you don't have to do that.
Sure, so then my, my question, so
Great.
My question would be, uh, if, so you would get rid of the purchases more than five thousand, less than fifty thousand may be approved when funds are available in the budget?
I think the discussion now is that it's in your budget, you can approve it. If you go, what I'm trying to find out is if we go with that, and I can live with that because it's in your budget, you're responsible, but if it's outside of your budget, I'd like to see an X dollar figure is, then the administrator and the finance director would approve it, if it goes above that number, we feel it's too high, whatever, then it would come before the commission, so it's, if it's in your budget, your drone thing, you wouldn't have to do that email anymore. If, if we delete that out, because you, you've already been authorized that one.
So just to throw in another, I guess.
Okay.
So we get approved for, as we're updating our computers because of the new Windows stuff. So we get approved for twenty laptops, they're five thousand dollars a piece. Or fifty five hundred dollars a piece, let's say with the hardware and whatnot. They come back at fifty two hundred dollars, which allows us enough money to buy one extra within the budget amount, now that I'm buying one extra, would I have to come back to the commission and get approved to buy that one extra?
Not if we delete this, this, right, the purpose is, yeah, we're going to give the department is more flexibility. We, we're debating, I, 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 so clear, I'm looking at, if it's out of the budget, I believe we should pick a number and that should be a staff decision, and then when it goes above that number, then it, then it comes to the commission.
Why don't we just delete it, talk it through around the outside of the budget call and see if that number doesn't work out for some odd reason.
I, I, it's three thousand, say.
I was thinking of the ten dollars.
I, I think both ten.
All right, damn.
So we're looking at, so we're looking at, under the, the phrase authority, under that title, deleting that, and then the motion would be to, if it's out of the budget, if it's below ten thousand, just, uh, administrator, finance director approve it, if it's above ten thousand, it comes to commission.
And no.
Yeah. I'll second that outstanding.
One person is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, do you say aye?
Aye. Is that answered? I guess you said that. So, so what we're doing is we're deleting, under authority that department should have their discretion. If it's something out of the budget, if it's under ten thousand, the funding instructor, who, if it's ten thousand or more, it has to come to the commission for a vote. Does that clear up what you were looking for, Ms. Wong said?
Turn that up, please, 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 one chair.
Um, another funding source.
Right, out of their budget, right.
But if the budget.
It's my head.
Right, you still have you still have to go to the board with the budget. Yeah, I just want to make sure we got what you were looking for too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, what I'll do is if, if everyone are more with that, I'll memorialize this, bring it back next week, make sure it's language that is, or next meeting, make sure it's language that's acceptable and then you can approve. The new.
Excellent, yeah.
Sounds great, okay.
Sheriff that I, that I, what you were looking at, okay. I had a, very board meeting, we're kind of wrapping up, getting ready, the dates are June eighteenth to June twenty second. And I will give you the official date and time when I'm going to be at the Doug's thing. A little closer, but I tell you, it's, it's a goal, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity, it looks like it's going to be the eighteenth. But, uh, so sixteenth, it's a Wednesday through, Sunday eighteen to twenty second. And then right now, we're just finishing up getting ready, and then like I said, at the meeting before, the last meeting before, I'll make sure I highlight the, my appearance, and it's a golden opportunity, so once in a life. Maybe I'll do it every, I don't know, but, uh, just so you know, that's where, that's the days.
Cindy, do you have anything for us? Yeah, can you just hit the, oh, no.
Madam Chair, I have nothing to report.
Do you think, Cindy?
We went over both of mine to throw up their reports in conversations office.
I am the same, we have reviewed all the things that I was part of. We can move on to unfinished new business. Grand Sky Invoice, Mr. Rest of your side.
I have conflict of interest, so I'm asking for a motion to allow me to vote on this item, uh, before the board despite my conflict of interest and I'm asking not to get that.
Now, can we review?
Yes.
Both.
Hold on one second, we're double checking invoice, I thought there was one. I don't see one here to sign on.
That's that.
Right. We have here County Administrator. The employment job description. We kind of
county chair members of the board, um, and included in the packet is, uh, two versions of the county administrator job description and employment agreement. The first, uh, of each in the packet is, um, the initial draft, um, put together by the subcommittee that was created by the board. Um, and then the second versions of each document, um, the, the committee's draft was provided to Mr. Ford for his consideration. He provided some suggested changes to the draft, which, um, provided in red line form, so you can see what he struck and what he added to the subcommittee's draft. So both are provided to the board through your consideration and discussion and approval. Essentially, the, the most significant distinction between the two versions is, um, the pay rate, uh, Mr. Ford's version is a slight increase from what the subcommittee came up with. Um, and then the second most significant, uh, difference between the two versions is that the subcommittee's draft provided, um, that Mr. Ford's role would be to serve as a liaison. The term is used where you would be a liaison between the Board of Commissioners and, uh, the department heads for each department. Um, Mr. Ford's draft provides that his role would be, um, to serve as a supervisor, um, overseeing department head. So, um, naturally, depending on the version that the board, uh, decides upon, if, um, the supervision component is uh, included in the draft, um, one thing the board would want to consider moving forward is updating some of those county policies um, that reflect the department heads' report to the commission, um, as well as probably some of those job descriptions as well, because they probably each reflect who that department head reports to. So for example, the, the related county policies would be, uh, department head discipline and, and things along those lines, which obviously we wouldn't have to address today, but that would be the natural next step if that was something.
Approval of the amended version, assuming all the, uh, subsequent policy or gets that taken care of on the back end.
Both of them, job description and contract.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, do you say aye?
Aye.
Both. Motion back.
Also want to entertain a motion to the chair's signature on that. Effectively.
Twenty twenty five, chair's signature.
Little maneuver the motion, sorry, Mr.
Nothing personal against Mr. Ford, but I'll just make a quick comment that the commission did vote to make Miss Hilli's pay retroactive to the sixteenth instead of the eighth for payroll purposes. So I don't know if that would ensue the same sort of issue or not, but if we're going to try to run in current and hold, hold things alike.
That would make it June first. And we have to figure out how to get it into payroll because it's totally different than how everybody else is saying, so that would give us enough time.
I'm confident. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll amend my second June first.
All those who never agree, then we can, we say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, vote against.
Put it on the agenda, so it's up to them.
Madam Chair, I can, so I was, I was asked to, um, put this on the agenda item, the sheriff's salary. I don't think it'd be appropriate if I lead the discussion or make any recommendations on what it should be as these elected officials. But it's been discussed for a while now, now that the sheriff has added responsibility, added weight, he's responsible for a very vulnerable population, obviously. Um, so the commission had just discussed elevating or adjusting the sheriff's pay adequately reflect the added responsibilities. I, I was asked to look at what the, the three major counties, what the sheriff pay rate are at, the pay rate is at. It's Burishheim sent that to me, uh, I laid that, I don't think it's in the packet, but I laid it on your desks and it outlines Ward County, Cass County and Burley County, and so those are kind of the, the pay rates, and then of course it includes the sheriffs as well. But yeah, I, I was tasked to put it on there and then provide what the other three county sheriffs make.
Those about saying a major adjustment needed here. Job of both the sheriff and the jail administrator. And the transition, which is probably going to be a eighteen, twenty four month headache.
Ward County is pretty, pretty parallel with, uh, where, uh, Rand Forks County is uh, as far as population and things like that. Cass County, there are Cass County, there's twice the size of Rand Forks. And and they're uh they're inmates in some and. Uh Burley County, they're kind of the hide, but they also, when you look at at Burley County, they also house all of Morton County's prisoners. Um so they're they're kicking into the bucket there for that one. I think um uh Mr. Burkholder was at what, a hundred fifty?
Or fifty-three something.
One fifty-three. So uh the sheriff currently is at one forty-two, one twenty, twenty-three. I guess for discussion purposes, I would say at least ten thousand for an increase. And just for discussion, so I don't know how everyone else does.
That's what's beneath.
I I got a motion ready to go, I I'll move uh effective uh June first, a pay rate of one fifty-four, one twenty, point twenty-three.
Um so that should go retroactive back to when he was uh given to jail, I think, I actually think it should be. Because CXP is has been doing the job.
Got a date.
When did that?
With that commission meeting that he took over?
Well, we do the if we do payroll of the April first.
Yeah, April first, same amount.
After what?
Uh it's less than too big and more than a
What was it, one fifty-one?
One at twelve thousand dollars.
My thoughts was one thirty-two, because he's doing the job of both.
Well, the rest of them worked too.
Right. He's taken it over, he's doing all the work, that's essentially slide after that number. I don't think.
I well, I just want, I really want to see what this budget's going to be before I start committing bigger amounts. Thousand dollar a month. This is a significant increase. There's a Ward County sheriff on the jail.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's comparable, I'm just, I'm not opposed to stuff down the line, but
Yeah.
I really, really want to see what this budget's going to be before.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like much, but pennies add up and I I just don't know where we're at as a county. I'm concerned that uh I want to make sure this
I
we're set, we got a lot of fish to fry here.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate right now. I I agree, Mr. uh Birkey right now about seeing where the budget comes out and uh we can address it later too, but at least twelve thousand right now.
My my only pushback on that is, so it's one fifty-four and Burkholder was getting one fifty-three, right? So he's getting a thousand dollars more, right, might might not do that right.
Well, I can't, I I can't control what the other one got paid.
I get it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you gotta look at that, what the other counties are getting, okay, seriously, you know, it's uh.
And I'm open, I said, down the road, but I
Yeah.
I I I believe this budget is such an unknown, and we have so many things, I don't think we all realize even even more capital stuff we're going to be paying for. But I just, I I'm set on that and I'm ready to vote, but.
You got a motion?
Yeah, that was a motion.
I say me.
All right.
And it's back to April first, retroactive to.
Chair Higgins, members of the commission, thanks for that opportunity to talk. Uh I I guess it is a little bit awkward talking about my salary, I don't think that you guys have had open discussions or has decided where any interims or other individuals, including Mr. Ford, where their salary should be in an open meeting, so that's kind of awkward as well. I did uh inform Commissioner Ross that uh I'm not, I'm not going to sit up here and say how much I should make, I just don't. I didn't sign up to do this job for the money. Uh if I did, I'm definitely going to own my business. But I do think that it's uh, I guess insulting probably isn't the right word, but to put me in charge of now half of the county's budget and about half of the county's employees and uh offer me an extra couple hundred bucks more than Mr. Burkholder was making, manage the jail is a little bit insulting. Uh basing it off of the three largest counties, sure, I can see where you're getting that from. But there's several other counties, smaller, sure, oil country makes a little bit more money. But there's other county sheriffs that make more, there's other county sheriffs that make less as well. So trying to base it off of that, I don't, I guess I see where partial logic is. Uh we're dealing with quite a significant different uh scenario here in Grand Forks County right now. As far as the jail and the sheriff's office and me taking over, they've been running that way since the day is long. Uh the sheriff running the jails there, the the county had established uh probably with benefits over two hundred thousand dollars for an administrator around the jail and probably around a hundred and seventy-five thousand with benefits for a sheriff to run the sheriff's office. I'm not saying that my pay should be both of those, I would never say that, but a couple hundred bucks more than you're paying an administrator and now put me in charge of uh two departments technically is. I I did tell Mr. uh Commissioner Ross that I had no intention of coming up here and making a case for what I should make unless it was uh at what Mr. Burkholder is making or less, I found that a little bit disrespectful, uh so here I am. Uh and again, I can't vote, but uh I can voice my opinion on that, so I'm not gonna send campaign for what it should be, but I just, I just think that that's a little bit uh low, uh I'm pretty sure at this point, I'd say the county worth twelve thousand, I would certainly not do.
Well, I'll just comment that, and this is due to Mr. Burkholder, if I'd have been up here a long time ago, he would have been at one fifty-six. And I motion to stand, I'm ready to vote, want someone to go hire, make another motion, I know we're on that. Thousand dollars a month is up this needs up.
I'll put the vote. On your roll call vote? Did you? Oh, and you want to roll call vote?
Yes, my vote on the motion is yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to see it amended, but I'm not going to vote no, the sheriff raises, but I guess I can vote as yes, right? I think another number is a little more appropriate, given all the uh extra duties being asked.
Going to pass anyway, but I'm going to vote no, because we have put a lot on Andy's plate and he deserves to be paid of what he's been doing, so that's all I'm going to say, but motion passes four to one.
You know, we can see how the budget turns out here when we get into the budget cycle, it can be adjusted.
I know.
You know, so.
In charge of so much now and he's been putting so much time and energy into it to not pay him more than the previous person that was already there. I will agree, it's kind of insulting, but we'll move on, okay.
For the record, he's being paid more.
Oh.
Director Finance and Next Auditor's search update.
Very quickly, I can I'll take that, uh we posted for a second time, then we have interviews.
Yeah, how many uh how many interviews you have?
One.
One, there.
It's gonna be a.
Better or none?
Right, in the county pay rate.
Uh Ms. Lee, I'm going to take that one.
Okay.
Chair Higgins, this will be brief, um Commissioner Birkey had asked that we bring back information regarding the number of people who are under twenty dollars an hour. Four individuals in the county, two of them are zone employees and transportation aid position where we have no control over their compensation. The only other two positions that are under twenty dollars an hour are both in buildings and grounds, one is the vacant position that you approved to be refilled last meeting, and the other is the position held by Douglas Ferrari. And so um if we moved Mr. Ferrari from a grade four to a step from a grade four step four to a grade four step five, that would then fulfill the request to have it um over twenty dollars an hour. So my recommendation, and I've had conversations with Mr. Ford as well, we need to make that move and we can make that effective um June first.
I'll move.
First and a second, any other discussion? Little bit of favor of the motion, do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion passed.
Madam Chair, commissioners, I'll make this brief, because I don't want to do the last thing down in your dream in a German. Uh the current youth assessment center, old correctional center or old jail, what do we do with it, that's been discussed since pre-COVID. Um uh there's everything from demolish it to remodel it for the the sheriff's office, and that's off the table, obviously, we leave it alone. Uh the most recent discussions have been remodeling at least the current youth assessment center portion, maybe more uh to lease to interested tenants. Um Ms. Womstead, Ms. Leon, Mr. Gresheski were tasked in looking into this, they did look into it. Um they they asked me to weigh in and my recommendation was, let's wait until we can bring this back to the commission for further guidance. Um I will say this, that I, in the last year, I've had four different entities reach out about inquiring to lease office space in the cup. Um that doesn't mean they're still there today, I'm just saying the opportunities have presented themselves. So Ms. Ms. Womstead, Mr. Gresheski and Ms. Leon identified some areas in the current YAC that could be turned into office space, obviously, there's a cost that goes along with it. Perhaps even abortion could be used for county storage, um which which I can expand on at another time unless the commission wants me to do so now. Um but really, if if the commission wants to explore remodeling the youth assessment center, um the next logical step would be uh the county to publish a request for qualifications for professional services. Uh and then bringing on an engineer, uh door, Mr. Gresheski, and in making that what we want it to be, to then start to get a real some real hard estimates on what it would cost the county. But obviously, I I don't want to go down that road yet without commission direction, because that that's the next step in my opinion. Uh so I I'm leaving it to the commission on arguing bike staff to proceed. Let me, let me add too, um obviously, this this wouldn't be a twenty twenty-six budget item if we proceeded, this would be more like a a twenty twenty-seven budget item if we were to put it in.
Well, I'd like to see us, first of all, I I would want to try and make a run at getting this done next year, if we can, I I think we should we've got plans drawn up to what we want to do, I think we should, and then some work needs to be done, I don't know all the details exactly what needs to be done, but I think we should put up for uh for services for an agreement to look at what needs to do to for the roof, for the HVACs and to remodel the offices. There's some work that's going to have to be done there, that's going to have to be done no matter what we do, and then there's some work where it would be we could decide if we want to do that or not. But I think we should bid for, get an amount for everything, because then we would technically, we should take all of our pay, we take out what we have to do anyway. And then we'll get a cost of what the remodel is going to cost it, then we can compare that to amount of office space we would gain. Say if people from here move over there, see, then how many offices we could empty all these offices out, get that stuff over there and it'll stay dry, because say the roof's been done. Then we have all these extra offices, then we'll be able to figure out a payback on that project. But we want, we're not going to know that unless we bid all this out. Because A, we have to do X no matter what, B is the remodel, that's the extra versus C, the leases. So how fast could, we might have to upfront pay something, but then we 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 poof that every year in lease payments. And if we have people asking, the longer we wait, then eventually they might go somewhere else, and then we lose that opportunity. That's why I like to see us to do this next year if we're going to do it, but we can't do anything till we get a number. So so we have information, so I would like us to do whatever to do to get a number for everything that we need, whether it be the roofs, the HVAC, and the remodel, and then we can have a detailed discussion on how much you want to spend, what we want to spend, etc.
Roofs upfront, right now, I have hard numbers for them and for the entire re-roof on the building over the youth center and the entire old jail. We are just standing just shy of a hundred five thousand dollars. They had a price in separate segments says from previous direction that as you've given us on that. So I have those hard numbers there, if I I hesitate in going too far into what might be century code requirement or not, if you start a project, it becomes a project and that dollar amount is two hundred thousand dollars under trucking. If we do this to preserve the building by putting a roof on it, we're we're nearly at that two hundred thousand dollars, we're not anger here to remodel. If you do this to preserve the building, this is going to take a few more years. Every year when it rains, we can remove just keep what good is left there dry in the meantime, so it all depends on how you want to pursue it. It's very precarious to to make too many plans or to do or ask too much of contractors or engineers without some kind of some kind of firm direction that we're going to go in. However, if we don't do something with the roof, we're going to continue to create that to work. If we remodel just the youth assessment area with HVAC needs as well as what remodel needs would be there to go into an office setting, we're well over two hundred thousand under modeling there without without that. Um so the direction that we need to know is where where do we want to go and what do we want. What?
What would be bidding is just, then we come and look at it and give us a price to do whatever we tell to, is that correct? That's all we've done, we can be out.
Sure, if if that is what the commission would like to do, that would be the purpose, yes, let's put out bids and let's see what it's going to cost us.
Just give us
Yes, sir.
An estimate on everything we need to do.
Yes, sir, I think and I think Mr. Gresheski correctly memorized, also what you were saying was being cautious of um contractors bidding and then not being too sure if we're actually going to go through the work, which may deter bidders or may deter bidding from future projects.
I'm not talking about bidding contractors, I'm talking about giving an estimate, don't we hire an engineer to say he's going to cost, whatever. To do what you want to do, it's going to cost you a million dollars, whatever, that's the number I want, because I can't make a decision till I get that number. Am I clear?
I'm following you.
That initial, the the initial professional services contract for patient collection and and uh estimation would generally be that with the from an engineer, yeah.
Yeah, it's my world, I want us to do that, because I want to see if there's a, it's efficient to do the remodel compared to, we could figure all this out, but I don't have any numbers now, so I can't make that a decision.
Just uh Commissioner Birkey, members of the board, point of clarification, am I understanding you correctly that you would like to hire a professional to do an assessment, cost assessment of the alternative, so like the teardown price versus the keep it all and re-roof it all?
Well, I I don't even want to tear it down, because I think there's some, that'd cause more problems, I I wouldn't mind re-roofing it so we could store things over there and open up more. I I'd like to see us look at re-roofing for storage, the old altra jail, and then the other part, the re-roofing, what are we going to do? And then remodel it, put offices in there, so we could open up more offices here to rent out to other agencies to to do revenue, that's what I'm looking at, so I can then we can say, well, he's right, we're going to have to roof it, there are certain things we have to do, so I want to make numbers up. So if it's five hundred thousand to do what we have to do, and another five hundred thousand to do everything, that'd be me. So if it's five hundred thousand to do what we have to do, and another five hundred thousand to do everything, that'd be a man, then we decide, do we wanna spend five hundred? Thousand, or do you wanna spend a million? And I'd like to see us do it next year, if we can, because every year we don't rent the office space out, that's every year a lost revenue. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
It does make.
You're hesitating.
But the, I guess the thing, maybe I, I worded incorrectly, the teardown. I understand from visiting with Mr. Gresheski is that. The teardown would be like a partial teardown. There's a portion that at a minimum he would need to maintain, which would equal to that.
Okay, I heard it, so like the garage stores for the, they could drop off the cars or that kind of stuff?
That I defer to, Mr. Gresheski.
Leaving, leaving that and tearing down another section wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be an option. The. To have some sort of a contained. Person or inmate drop-off point is going to be a requirement to get that into, into the courthouse regardless of what happens to that structure, to that building. Currently, we do have that operational in, in a very minimalistic sense right now with. A term of interruption coming, as soon as the Youth Assessment Center leaves. We have to make a change to that Sally Board in order to be even the operational board or inmate drop-off. There is no way we can function with the operators that we have in there with. Control without them on second floor. So in order for the inmate transport van to come right now. They notify them, they're coming, they open the door, they close the door, then drop off. We have to make some work of it, just minimalistic before that, once that interrupts. Here, pop up. Or jail drop-off. The. The amount of construction, where the construction goes from there within the building. Is the, the concern I have with not having clear direction from this point forward is. What do we tell engineering services are, what our vision is? If we give them. Twenty-five possibilities. They're not gonna.
Well, I'll give you mine. I don't wanna tear literally this or something. I mean, I thought, I wanted to keep the old thing for a storage area. So we get all the stuff out of this building that's clogging up all these offices, get it over there. If it's re-roofed, it won't get wet. And we could store it in the old jail area, because it'll be dry and crack the heat in it cool. So that would stay, and then that will give us more office to rent. I wasn't looking at beginning the process of knocking down that whole stretch. Because I think we can wait on that for a significant amount of time. I guess that's, I don't know where the rest here.
That was my understanding.
The roof, the roof is what needs to be done.
Right, but, but, but we have to do the roof so we can, we can't put the election equipment in rainwater.
Right.
There'll be some problems there.
That's first and foremost.
Right, so the roof we would do, then that old jail would become a storage area.
And you get the, here's where we could get the roofing done on that. Engineering services and professional services to drive up, is that part of the project over a grant period of time required?
Well, I would, if you came with the puzzle to do the roof. I'm ready to go on that, because we gotta fix the roof no matter what, and then that would reduce the amount we have to spend on the other stuff. I don't, we'll probably still over two hundred thousand, but if we have to fix the roof, why, why we stop waiting? Let's go.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Birkey, what I'm hearing, I'm hearing two different things. Let's get estimates. We don't need to go out to public bid, but let's get estimates on putting a new roof on the facility. And then we need to, we should also put out, uh, RFP to remodel the current Youth Assessment Center. I'm not saying we do it at one, I'm just saying there's two steps I'm hearing. And then looking for a price on what it would cost us to remodel the existing or current Youth Assessment Center office space.
A, as a diagram show, so they, they don't, we're, we're gonna tell them what we want, not them come in and make the gold plate and statues. This is what we want. But yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to have the, the vote on the roof. If, if it's leaking, what's, what are we waiting for? I don't know where the rest of yours.
Can we just get a price on the roof?
I, I, I did bring.
Next, next to me. Because that's first and foremost.
Is if we are looking to do a remodel, re-roofing. That it doesn't appear that we're avoiding the public bidding process by concealing it? So for example, um, if we're going to do the re-roofing in addition to a renovation. The office space, we probably would want a public bid the whole, just to stay on the hype and up. Otherwise, it appears that we're concealing the project. To avoid that two hundred thousand dollar threshold, which would be a violation of the public.
I'm all for the roof. I don't know about the remodel.
Yeah.
Because I don't have any information. I've got information on the roof. I'm not trying to cheat the system. I. The roof's a no brainer. I, I don't know what we're gonna do with the remodel, because I have no idea what the numbers are gonna be. So I, I don't, I, my, I don't think we're cheating the system. I just wanna fix the leaky roof. And then we'll go from there and get information and, because we're not gonna remodel this year, then we could, we decide to do it, it's gonna be a next year thing. But I would like to see it in a twenty twenty-six budget, so we get these office space, offices opened up and get some, lease one here.
Stop it from leaking.
Yeah, but, but that's not a guarantee. The roof is a guarantee. At least we're all for it.
Madam Chair, that's clear. We have our own orders. Thank you.
Hold on, is there any points on it? Hold on, I don't think there was, was there? Okay, go ahead, sir. Who was in favor?